Good evening. My name is Joe Sawyer and I'm the Superintendent of Schools for the Shrewsbury Public Schools. And tonight's, May 9th, 2018, school committee meeting is the one meeting of the year that I actually gavel in and open up because this is the first meeting after the town election, after which the school committee reconstitutes itself as far as its officers. I want to first congratulate Mr. John Wensky on his reelection. Congratulations, looking forward to working with you for the next three years. Also want to thank Dr. Dale McGee for serving as Chair for the past year, Mr. Wensky for serving as Vice Chair, and Ms. Fritz for serving as Secretary. Appreciate all the work that went into that and leadership and support. So the school committee's policy is that they do organize the first official meeting after the town election, and it's my responsibility to accept nominations for the Chairperson of the school committee for the next year until the next town election, next spring. And after a new Chair is elected, that Chair will take over the meeting and accept nominations and votes for Vice Chair and Secretary. So at this time, are there any nominations for Chair of the Shrewsbury School Committee? Ms. Consano?
I nominate Jason Palance for Chair.
I second it.
Most have been made and seconded. Any discussion? Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, would it be a vote, all in favor of Mr. Jason Palance being the Chair of the Shrewsbury School Committee for the coming year?
Aye.
None opposed? And unanimously, Mr. Palance's election. Congratulations. Well done.
Yeah. That's what. Thank you, colleagues. And before I go any further, I do want to thank Dr. McGee for his Year of Service as Chair to the committee. I know that I and certainly all of us appreciated your leadership. It's been a real benefit to us as committee members, as well as to the students of Shrewsbury Public Schools, so I thank you for your exorbitant amount of time you committed to the role. And I promise you, I will be counting on you to contribute just as much, if not more, going forward. We will now proceed to the election of a Vice Chairperson. I'll accept nominations at this time. Mrs. Fritz?
I would like to nominate Mrs. Consano for Vice Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Consano has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of Mrs. Consano as Vice Chairperson, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mrs. Consano as Vice Chairperson. We will now move on to the election of our Secretary for the coming year. Are there any nominations? Mr. Wensky?
To nominate Sandy Fritz.
Mrs. Fritz has been nominated. Is there a second?
Second.
Has been seconded. Any further nominations? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of Mrs. Fritz as Secretary, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mrs. Fritz is our Secretary. Thank you, Sandy, for your continued service in that role.
And now we get to move.
Everybody all set? We got a little nameplate thing going there? You want to fix that? There we go. There we go. Good evening. On behalf of my colleagues and central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to the Shrewsbury School Committee Meeting of May 9th, 2018. Our meeting tonight is being televised thanks to the work of Mr. John McDonald and the Shrewsbury Media Connection. This meeting will be rebroadcast on Channel 29 until our next regularly scheduled meeting on May 16th, and is also available for streaming at the Shrewsbury Media Connection's website. The first item on our agenda is public participation. This is always the first item on our each regularly scheduled meeting. Public participation provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the school committee, and for the future, those wishing to do so can contact the Chairperson in advance, and you'll be recognized for up to three minutes. Tonight, Mr. Brian Moss has requested to address the committee, and so we will hear from him at this time. Mr. Moss?
Great, thank you. First, I just wanted to note that I'm speaking only on my behalf about my own opinions and concerns and not on behalf of any other person or group. At the last meeting, I asked the school committee to revisit its decision to install a plastic artificial turf field, and instead vote to install a high-use natural grass field that is organically managed. The new information I provided was that the Envirofil Warranty states that, on average across the plastic field, a minimum of 70% of the product will remain coated. This means that up to 30% of the hundreds of thousands of pounds of plastic-coated infill may wear off, causing microplastic pollution that would pose a risk to the health of our athletes and students, and a risk to the quality of our drinking water. You might be surprised to find out that plastic artificial turf fields are subject to no health or safety standards and are not regulated by any governmental agency. We cannot rely on the industry that stands to profit from it to decide a safe level of toxic exposure to our children and environment. Why should we take this additional risk when the Massachusetts Toxic Use Reduction Institute has stated that the organically managed natural grass turf fields are going to be the least toxic alternatives for towns to implement in their playing fields? The school committee has cited extended use as the primary driver. But extended use for whom? Currently, Shrewsbury High School plays less than 100 events a year on the current stadium field, and that is because the current field is in poor condition and is poorly drained, as stated in the consultant's assessment. Gale Associates has stated that a well-maintained, well-drained, natural grass field can provide up to 300 events. Therefore, improving natural grass field would provide triple the number of uses. Therefore, I believe natural grass can meet most of the extended use needs of Shrewsbury High School sports. Although, artificial turf could provide for even more extended use, that use would be beyond the needs of Shrewsbury High School and mainly benefit non-Shrewsbury High School groups. However, the school committee has cited that extended use for the community is also a driver to install artificial turf. I believe extended use for the community can also be achieved by addressing both the Phase 1 and Phase 2 parts of the project. With the almost $800,000 raised for the field, instead of installing one artificial turf field to get up to 720 events, why not install two natural grass fields, one at the stadium field and the other at the lacrosse field, to get up to 600 events? That should be more than enough extended use to meet Shrewsbury High School's and additional needs of the community while avoiding the risk to our children and town water supply. This would also save the town from having to raise the additional $800,000 for the planned Phase 2 artificial field at the lacrosse field, and also prevent Shrewsbury from having to spend eventually $800,000 every decade to tear up both plastic artificial turf fields, send them to the landfill, and replace them with new fields, new plastic fields, over and over again for decades to come. So by voting to install two natural grass fields, you could take care of both the Phase 1 stadium field and Phase 2 lacrosse field for the same price as just one plastic artificial turf field. That is $800,000 for two natural grass fields instead of the 1.6 million for two plastic artificial turf fields planned for the high school. Please reconsider your vote and vote to install the safer and lower-cost alternative of natural grass fields that are well-maintained, well-drained, and managed organically. And please feel free to ask me questions. Thank you.
Three minutes to the second. Do you have any written materials to provide the committee?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is Chairperson and Members' Reports. Members, anything to report? I do have one item. This past Saturday, I was very fortunate to have the chance to attend the Shrewsbury Public Schools Elementary and Middle School Art Festival that was held at Sherwood. I just want to say it was a fantastic event, walking around, looking at literally hundreds and hundreds of pieces of artwork. It is easy to lose yourself and forget that it's actually young children, in some cases very young children, doing these fantastic works of art. So kudos to all the students who had their works displayed at that event, and kudos to all the staff and faculty who took part in setting that up. That was quite the undertaking. Next item on our agenda is Superintendent's Report. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. And the Art Festival is always a highlight every year, and unfortunately, I was out of town on some family business, but it's always an extraordinary job. And I can thank our teachers for the outstanding work they did, and of course, the art students who were displaying their work. Superintendent's Report this evening, a couple of pieces. I'd like to start first by deferring and asking Mrs. Clowder to comment on an event she was able to go to that I wasn't, involving our student innovation team at Shrewsbury High School.
Shrewsbury High School is fortunate to have students that support technology at the high school with a help desk, but the thing that I was able to comment on and participate in briefly by seeing some student passion projects in the media center recently was looking at some of the long-term projects students followed up on as part of their class aspect of that work. So students elected to follow their interests and use technology to leverage sharing that interest with others. Anything from the potential colonization of Mars and what that would look like and what that would entail, to following culinary aspects of cooking techniques across the world, to thinking about researching video games from 1980 and beyond and their implications for gamification now. But students were articulate, poised, and all of this was orchestrated by first-year teacher Jason Andriola under the auspices of Shawna Powers, the Director for Instructional Technology. And it was just remarkable to get a sense of the amount of time and passion devoted to learning outside of the traditional parameters of school, and their interest in connecting with other learners. One young student that really stood out in that regard was a novelist that we have as a sophomore at Shrewsbury High School, and his commitment to kind of devoting an online writer's workshop forum and sharing some of the tools that have helped him to publish his work with other people who are interested in doing that. So kudos to Ms. Powers and to our high school students for their efforts.
So again, congratulations to those students. Some congratulations are also in order to four of our Shrewsbury High School students for their performance at the Massachusetts State Science Fair that was held at MIT on May 4th and 5th, earning an honorable mention. Lance Wong, the title of his project was "An Investigation Into the In-Vitro Interactions Between Inter-Alpha Tripsin Inhibitors and the Retrocytes Aggregation." Third-place award, Gurima Prabakar, "An Algorithm to Differentiate Between Exoplanets and Stellar Jitter." Second-place award, Dushria Chidibabu, "Addressing Global Water Security Using Light-Absorbing Nanomaterials." And a first-place award to Zoe Rudnick for Robot Navigation for the Exploration of Lunar and Planetary Surfaces. So these are some basic projects, obviously, from their titles. Extraordinary work. I was able to attend the Science Fair at the high school where these and many other students displayed, and others went on to regionals, and then these students were awarded at state. It's a very successful program, and we will be inviting Zoe Rudnick as a first-place winner to come join the school committee at some point at a future meeting. But congratulations to all of those students. And then finally, this week is National Teacher Appreciation Week. Yesterday was National Teacher Day, today is National School Nurse Day. I just want to, again, thank the extraordinary educators we have, the benefit of serving our students here in Shrewsbury. We are, I am deeply appreciative of the hard work that they do, the skill that they bring to the work, and the zeal they have for helping to improve the lives of our students. And momentarily, you'll see some of the results of that and hear about how some of the teachers have influenced the students we'll be honoring this evening. And that is Superintendent's Report.
Excellent. The next item on our agenda is the Student Recognition of Shrewsbury High School's Class of 2018 Senior Scholars. Each year, the school committee recognizes the 10 senior students with the highest grade point averages in their class. We are fortunate to hear from these outstanding students tonight. Each of our honorees is going to be introduced by the superintendent, and then we'll have a chance to make a few remarks. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. I had the pleasure of having breakfast recently with this group of students, along with Mr. Bizidlo and the Assistant Principals at the high school, and it was really a terrific conversation. We do this each year traditionally, and it was excellent to hear not only the things that our scholars were positive about during their experience during, and schools, and many of them have been with our schools since preschool all the way through, but also constructive criticism about how we can get better and serve students' needs at the schools in the future for students who are coming through after them. You will see from, I'll make some brief comments about each, just to pull out a few highlights. There are materials in your packet that show what extraordinary students and young people the senior scholars are. They make us incredibly proud to have students of this caliber, to be able to celebrate the learning they've done and their accomplishments, and we're pleased to have them here tonight. So I'll begin, and we'll do this in alphabetical order, with Kate Bowers. Kate, among other things, is the President of the French National Honor Society, the Model UN Vice President, the President and Co-Founder of Cooking with Chemistry Club. She interned at UMass Medical School's Biochemistry Lab, and where she did some projects related to ALS. And she also plays a flute, the flute, as a member of the school band and during spring musical performances. Kate will be attending Tufts University this fall. Please welcome Kate Bowers.
Dr. Sawyer, school committee, everyone in attendance tonight, thank you so much for having me. I'm really honored to be here, and I'd like to take the opportunity to thank some of the members of the Shrewsbury community who have helped me grow to this point. So first, Mrs. Grandmont, who was my second-grade teacher at Shrewsbury, yeah, at Spring Street School. I was very timid when I first joined her second-grade class, but her constant kindness and encouragement really led me to come out of my shell and pursue my love of learning, and it's her constant and sincere kindness that I will never forget, and that has led me, I think, to go on this way. The next year, I was lucky enough to have Ms. Tugger as my third-grade teacher, and she led me to express myself through creative writing and reading, and her love of words has left a positive influence on me to this day. When it came time to go to Shrewsbury High School, start my freshman year, I was naturally very nervous, but my fears were swept away when I went into my freshman year Honors Biology class taught by Mr. Brockie. He constantly challenged me, pushing me to look deeper into my subject material and to make connections with the outside world, you know, from ecology to DNA replication. And I planned to pursue biology and to major in that when I go to college this fall, and I believe that it's his constant and meaningful kindness that has led me to really fall in love with the subject and to be confident enough to pursue it in my later studies. I'd also like to recognize Mr. Brown, my AP US History teacher from junior year, and Mr. Collins, my AP BC Calculus teacher from this year, who have both devoted a lot of time to mentoring me both academically and personally. They've been wonderful friends. Also, my dedicated advisor to Cooking with Chemistry Club, Ms. Durico, and Mr. Laporto and the full Sea Wing, who have always made a really welcoming and accepting environment for me to come home to. And of course, speaking of home, I'd like to thank my family, who have stood behind me and supported me for my entire life, and I really cannot thank them enough, from small details to grand gestures. They've always been there for me, and I appreciate them with my whole heart. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Kate. The next scholar is Mary Consano. Again, among other things, Mary obtained highest honors for every quarter throughout high school. She is, had been inducted into the National French and Math Honor Societies. She is part of the Honors Women's Choir, has participated in the school musical every year as well, and has also run on the cross-country team. This despite some personal health challenges that have really speak volumes about, as it's, her council writes, speak volumes to her drive and her work ethic. Mary, I understand, is going to be attending Wellesley College in the fall. Mary Consano?
Dr. Sawyer, central office staff, and members of the school committee, including my mother. Thank you for having me here today. It's a bit surreal, honestly, because I've watched this meeting probably many, multiple years, because my mom always told me it was her favorite of the year. And so to be standing here today with my peers is a very humbling experience. And I've been extremely lucky to have an overwhelmingly positive experience at the Shrewsbury Public Schools, largely due to the incredible teachers that I've had throughout the years. And so for me, that really began in elementary school at Patton. I had Ms. Calliger for both third and fourth grade. I was very lucky. And because of her passion, her enthusiasm, and her humor, I found a place where I was not only super excited to learn, but also I felt really at home and really, like, loved almost, because it was just a really accepting environment for me. And even her energy and her enthusiasm has still stuck with me even to this day. And then at the middle schools, I was lucky enough to meet Ms. McCann, who is the advanced math teacher there. And so whether we were outside measuring the area of a plot of grass in front of the old Sherwood, or if we were inside working on some seemingly very difficult math problem, I was always fascinated by the class and to hear about all the real-world connections to math, that was something that really meant a lot to me. Math was the most exciting thing to me because of her, and it really inspired me to continue to pursue my love of math. And then at the high school, I've had a number of very wonderful teachers, but some have stuck out more than others. Particularly, I had Mrs. Moynihan for both sophomore and junior year. And you can, just going into her classroom, you can tell how much she loves chemistry. And now I can say that I also love chemistry because of going to her class every day and learning so much from her. And particularly during junior year, when I took AP Chemistry. It was a very difficult class, but I loved it, and she was always there to constantly remind us that contrary to popular belief, we were going to be fine, and we were going to get into college, and it was all going to work out. I'd also like to thank my BC Calculus teacher this year, Mr. Collins. Between our class shenanigans and listening to me rant about school and difficult things after school in his classroom a few particular times, I really think of him as not only a teacher, but a mentor and a friend, and somebody who I've been really lucky to have this year. I'd also like to thank Mr. L. and the entirety of the Sea Wing. I've done choir for three years and the musical for four, and it's really been easily the most rewarding experience of high school. And I know that all the memories that I made and the experiences that I've had will stick with me because they've just been so incredible. I'd like to thank all of my friends for sticking by my side, some of them longer than others, and just being very incredible, some of them in the top 10. And lastly, I'd like to thank my family for being incredible. To my sister, thank you for being my biggest supporter. To my brother, thank you for reminding me that grades do not define you. To my dad, thank you for getting me cupcakes when I'm too stressed out. And to my mother, thank you for not pushing me to get a perfect GPA or to get straight As, but rather pushing me to be a better person, because that's really what matters at the end of the day. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Mary. The next scholar is Snigda Kalatur. Snigda is an outstanding student who is involved and inducted into the National Honor Society, the Math Honor Society, the French National Honor Society, and the Triumph Music Honor Society, has leadership roles, including Vice President and Secretary for two of those societies, and President of the Orchestra, is, plays a role in the Mentor Volunteer Program, and in addition, is a member of Excelsior, which is the school's literary newspaper. She's been a member of the Girls' Varsity Tennis Team, and also enjoys performing in traditional Indian dance outside of school. She will be attending Boston University in the fall. Please welcome Snigda.
I'm honored to be here today as one of 10 students being recognized for hard work achievement demonstrated over the past four years. First, I would like to thank Dr. Sawyer, Mr. Bizidlo, the administration, and the entire school committee. I would also, of course, like to thank my parents for being so supportive of me and for always encouraging me to take risks, and my brother for always offering me advice when I most needed it. The entire teaching staff in the Shrewsbury Public Schools has played a crucial role in shaping the way I approach thinking and learning. I would like to thank Mrs. Bobree from 7th Grade Social Studies for being one of the first teachers to truly believe in me and challenge me. She always had high expectations of me during our current events, competitions, or group projects, and she introduced me to a new global perspective, igniting my passion for social change. Next, I would like to thank Mrs. Pryor, who I had as my teacher for Precalculus and AP Calculus BC. She helped me see my potential even when I felt like I had none. She has completely changed the way I view math as a subject by not only teaching me what a certain concept is, but why it is the way it is. My favorite part of her class will always be getting to perform a cubic function rap under the infamous rap name Sniggy K. Additionally, I would like to thank my former orchestra teacher, Ms. Dagan, for pushing me to become a leader in my community. She believed in me enough to place me as principal violist as only a sophomore, and again as a junior, helping me, helping me become more vocal and active in the orchestra community. Finally, I would like to thank my Shrewsbury Girls' Varsity Tennis Coach, Josh Handy, for teaching me how to thrive under pressure and for believing me enough, believing in me enough to be a two-year co-captain alongside Ahana. If there's one thing that Shrewsbury High School has helped me learn the most, it's that failure is an essential part of growing. After starting freshman year with a long list of disappointments, such as not making it onto the crew team or the speech and debate team, the teachers and administration at SHS helped me grow and learn from these setbacks, helping me find new areas that I was even more passionate about, like tennis and orchestra. I've learned that not only is failure inevitable, it's a crucial part in helping us learn how to overcome obstacles and find what we're truly meant to do. Thank you once again for this recognition, and to everyone who has helped me get here.
Our next scholar is Abhinav Koredi. Abhinav has participated in regional and state science fairs, a member of the National Honor Society, the National Math Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, English Honor Society, and Social Science Honor Society. He's been involved in speech and debate and the swim team, as well as some community volunteer efforts. Outside of school, he worked as a summer research assistant for the past two summers, and is going to be included in part of a research publication from Boston Children's Hospital. Next year, he will be attending the University of California, Los Angeles. Abhinav.
Dr. Sawyer, members of the school committee, I've had the pleasure of being a part of the Shrewsbury Public School system since 7th grade, and these past few years really helped me to break out of my own bubble and connect with other people and form these strong friendships. When I moved to Shrewsbury from California, it was a difficult transition, not just because of the extremely cold weather, but more importantly, I had to adjust to an entirely different school system and learn to make new friends. After six years, looking back, all I remember is just how supporting and close the faculty and student body are, and without them, I would not be in the place I am today. Participating in extracurriculars like speech and debate and swim were instrumental in my own path to finding out who I am and what I want to do. Speech and debate really helped me to break out of my own bubble and find my own voice, and swim really helped me to search for a sense of community and perseverance. With so many extracurriculars available in Shrewsbury, I was given the opportunity to really relieve the daily stress of schoolwork brains and also connect with people just beyond the academic life. I would like to thank my teachers, Ms. Grayne, AP Psychology, Ms. Carter, Human Anatomy and Physiology, and Mr. Carpenter in History. With Ms. Grayne, I was really able to delve into what characterizes the human species as a whole and understand just how we're not just defined by our biology, for that is just a piece of the puzzle. And her class is what really pushed me to major in neuroscience. And in the case of Ms. Carter, I was really able to learn the various human systems of the body, and with the dissections and other hands-on labs, she really helped me to understand just how complex and unique we are as a species. And with Mr. Carpenter, he really helped me to understand and feel more excited to learn history just by his own passion with the subject. For middle school, I would like to thank my great administrator, Ms. Kirchi, and like her words, like on the first day was, "People aren't born smart, but it is through hard work that intelligence is born," and I still live by those words. And I would also like to thank Ms. Senora Peers, who really jump-started my own interest in Spanish culture. And most of all, I would like to thank my parents. Thank you, Mom, for your unconditional love and support throughout my school years and always gave me the jolt of confidence to push through a bad day. And thank you, Dad, for constantly dropping and picking me up from my after-school activities these past few years. Even when you had a million things to do, you still would make time to spend with me whenever spirits were low. And finally, thank you, Shrewsbury Public Schools.
Thank you, Abhinav. Our next scholar is Maya McCollum. Maya is a member of the National Honor Society, the National Chinese Honor Society. Maya is a member of the National Honor Society, the National Chinese Honor Society, Math Honor Society. She's also a National Merit Commended Scholar. She's a member of the speech and debate team, who's won many awards, sits on the Student Advisory Committee and Mentor Volunteer Program Board, is an accomplished musician, and was this year's two, or sorry, 2016 Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Representative from Shrewsbury High School. She will be attending the University of Massachusetts Commonwealth Honors College in the fall. Maya.
I want to start by thanking Dr. Sawyer, administration, and the school committee for inviting me and my classmates to tonight's event. I know that it is the work you all do for our school and community that allowed all of us to have such a positive experience at the Shrewsbury Public School System. My peers and I are here tonight because we got good grades in high school. But I also know that at Shrewsbury, we all received something far more important than high marks. In an increasingly contentious political environment, it can often become difficult to discern fact from fiction. Politicians, newscasters, and media personalities try to push different and often conflicting narratives on the public. But at Shrewsbury, we learned the critical thinking skills that have been necessary to help us come to our own conclusions. Throughout my entire academic experience, I have been taught to dig deeper into issues, to never simply accept things at face value. In class and in my extracurriculars, I've been encouraged to learn about the world around me so that I can for, create well-informed opinions on the issues that I care about. At Shrewsbury, students are encouraged to stand up and speak out. I've had many great teachers over the years, but there are a few I'd like to recognize tonight. First, Mr. Pezzuto was my English teacher in the eighth grade. And it was in his class that I learned effective strategies to communicate my ideas. During my junior year of high school, I was lucky enough to be part of Mr. Brown's AP US History class. Mr. Brown's unique history style, uh, teaching style encouraged each and every person in that class to look at American history in a new and interesting way. Lastly, my math teacher for the last two years, Ms. Pryor, showed me that not only is math not that scary, it can also be incredibly fun. To conclude, I would like to thank the teachers, administrators, and school committee members of the Shrewsbury Public Schools, as well as my parents, my sister, and all my lovely friends, who made my experience at Shrewsbury so wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Maya. Our next scholar is Ahana Mukapadhyay. She is a National Merit Commended Student, an AP Scholar with Distinction. She is involved in honor societies, including being voted President of the Spanish National Honor Society. She's the co-captain of the math team. She's been in speech and debate, and this year is the state champion in radio broadcasting. She's been a student council rep. She is co-captain of the varsity tennis team, and was a mid-watch All-Star in tennis in both ninth and 11th grade. Outside of school, playing piano, she has been very successful, including playing on multiple occasions at Carnegie Hall. And next year, she'll be attending Carnegie Mellon University. Please welcome Ahana.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer, for those kind words, and I'd also like to thank Mr. Bizidlo and the school committee for this honor. And of course, I'm grateful to my parents for, like Abhinav's parents, driving me to all my extracurriculars and investing time, effort, money, patience, and the list goes on without a limit. So, I'll start out with the insightful observation that most of us are coming up here to say pretty much the same things. The bulk of our speeches consist of thank yous. And this repetition is not meant to bore you, but it's meant to express how much the people in the Shrewsbury school system have shaped the way that we learn and engage with our communities. For example, in AP US History last year, we rarely came to class and just went through PowerPoints. Instead, Mr. Brown made learning interactive, having us debate or participate in simulations. We did live skits where Snigda ran around the classroom with a ping pong paddle, wearing a Grim Reaper mask, pretending to be the Great Depression. And I'm sure my classmates and Mr. Brown will always remember the iconic blonde wig I wore to every presentation. Before midterms, we formed a study group and sent schoolery messages to Mr. Brown with selfies and inside jokes, showing just how close the students and teachers are at this high school. I'd also like to thank Mr. Sessino, my English teacher this year, who has been one of the most passionate, eccentric, and insightful teachers that I've ever had. He found a way to link poetry to pretty much any other subject that you could think of, whether it be chemistry or chess, even pulling out a toilet plunger from the clip, from the cupboard to emphasize the symbolism of one of the characters in a book that we were reading. And finally, I'd like to thank Mrs. Pryor and Mr. Collins, my math teachers from the past two years. It wasn't only simple algebra that I learned in their classes, but rather life skills like problem solving. Nothing made me happier than deriving seemingly impossible solutions to problems in that class, probably because the solutions may not have existed. Most importantly, I'm grateful for the second family the students here have provided me with. I cherish the bonding experiences tennis has given me, whether it be during pasta parties, the occasional fancy post-game dinner at McDonald's, or our pre-game ritual of pep talks in the form of motivational rap compositions. Once again, thank you for this opportunity, and I'll miss the community that I've been a part of here at Shrewsbury High School for the past eighteen years.
Thank you, Ahana. Next is Matt Slaughter. Matt is a member of the Improv Club, the SHS Musical Speech and Debate Team. He's the vice president of the Acappella Choir and treasurer of the Spanish National Honor Society, president of the Triumph Music Honor Society, and a member of the Mentor Volunteer Program. He has been, participated in numerous musicals and performances. He was named to the All-State Choir and performed at Symphony Hall in Boston. And additionally, has been taken on major character roles in the spring musicals over the last few years, as well as being an accomplished piano player, and most recently became a skilled tap dancer, I'm told. And he is also performing community service, including raising money to participate in ALS Bike Ride in memory of a family friend. Matt will be going to North Carolina State University next year. Matt.
Dr. Sawyer, members of the school committee, thank you for having me. My journey in the Shrewsbury Public School System started in first grade. I remember hugging my mom's leg and begging her to take me back home. Little did I know that the next twelve years of my life would transform me into a confident, intellectually curious student. The strong academics have pushed me to achieve things that I never thought possible, and have continued to push me up until today. Contrary to what everyone says, it does not get easier second semester of senior year. Not only have the superb academics at Shrewsbury High School shaped me as a person, but also the extracurricular, extracurricular activities. I've been able to partake in many activities such as musical theater, choir, and speech and debate. I have made friends that will last a lifetime while also discovering my passions. I know for sure that I want to continue music performance in the future along with my engineering studies. In addition, I have also been able to work with and learn from quite a few wonderful teachers in Shrewsbury. In elementary school, my second-grade teacher, Mrs. Sudo, helped me build self-confidence and recognize my strengths. I actually received a no from her after my performance in the spring musical this past year, saying that she was so impressed with my performance, and it was, I was really happy to know that she was still watching me. In middle school, my seventh-grade teacher, Mrs. Bopri, not only had the same hair color as me, but she also taught me how to look at the world from a new perspective. I became aware of the many injustices in our world today, and I hope that someday I can change how we treat other people and the environment. This year, I've had the pleasure of studying physics with Mrs. Chico. Mrs. Chico makes it very clear how important her students are to her. I feel so welcomed every time I enter the classroom. She's supportive, caring, and knowledgeable, and she makes physics fun. The past four years, I've had Mr. Lopomaro as a choir teacher. He taught me how to be fearless and confident. I would have never been able to perform on stage for the spring musicals without his support. His class is also one of the one periods in the day when I can forget about grades and also just focus on making music. And lastly, I have to say thank you to my parents. They have taught me to be an honest, respectful, and caring person, while also being my best friend. When I need a ride home from musical rehearsal, or I need to run through flashcards at 10 o'clock at night, they were there to help, and I love them very much. Once again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Our next scholar is Suchir Rao. Suchir has been a leader in many areas, including speech and debate, and where he's run several awards. He's also the extemporaneous speech captain and treasurer. He also has been on varsity cross-country, indoor and outdoor track throughout high school, including being a league All-Star last outdoor season. He's been interning in a research group at WPI, focusing on modeling reactions to make solar cells more efficient. He's a National Merit finalist, vice president of the Spanish National Honor Society, and treasurer of the Math National Honor Society, where he helped improve the tutoring system. He will be attending Georgia Tech next year. Suchir.
Dr. Sawyer, school committee, and the school administration, just thank you for recognizing me today. So, I'd first like to say that I joined the Shrewsbury Public School System in fourth grade at Coolidge, and it's been a great ride ever since. And I'd just like to say that I think almost all the success I've had to date has been some factor of the numerous opportunities available to us as Shrewsbury students. In particular, I'd just like to reiterate the fact that our extracurricular program is amazing, and especially when our school is around, what, nineteen hundred odd kids right now? Just being able to find those smaller communities within the school through all these activities and exploring your interests is just invaluable. And that helped me in more than just extracurriculars, it helped me in every single part of my life. But we're also an extremely good school when it comes to our academics. I'd just like to start in middle school. First, my seventh-grade English teacher, well, now Dr. Gudikans, who not only taught me how to use logic and reason, but also turned me into a half-decent writer. And that's like a skill that I carry with me today, and it's honestly probably one of my most important skills and one of the ones that I value the most moving forward. Also, Ms. McCann, the advanced math teacher, because something that I think most of us have heard is that math is fun, except she was the first one, for me at least, who was actually able to make that connection. And that was honestly another invaluable experience, because it led to my love of math that, again, I carry with me right now. Moving on to the high school, I had the absolute honor of being taught by Dr. Lowry in my AP Chemistry class my junior year. And he's honestly been my most influential teacher to date. And I say this because he's basically become my second guidance counselor. He's probably the, yeah, he is the reason why I'm going to major in chemical engineering next year. And just as a person, he's spent countless hours with me after school just showing me what I could do in chemistry and just in science as a whole. Regardless of what I do, I know that my path has been carved out in some degree by Dr. Lowry, and I'm extremely thankful to have been taught by him for an entire year. Finally, it's a common name you've heard today, I'm sure it's in years past, but Mr. Collins, or as we affectionately call him Papa Collins. He is an instrumental part of our school community. I've enjoyed having him in BC Calculus this year. I can't really say much more than what's already been said about him, but he's easily the most genuine, entertaining, and capable teacher I've had to date. And if Shrewsbury has a local treasure, that's Mr. Collins. Last but not least, I'd like to recognize my parents who are somewhere in this audience. Right over there. Apparently, they've been teaching me since day one to be not only a better student, but a better person in general. And they've been moderately successful with both, more with the former. But I don't think I can ever repay just the hours they've spent driving me to places, let alone everything else. And I think they, they've shaped me into who I am today, and just, I love you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Suchir. Next is Albert Chu. Albert's been leader at Shrewsbury High School, captain of the math and science teams, a member of the student council, several honor societies, and a member of the high school quiz show team. He's devoted over 100 hours of community service. He's been part of the American Invitational Mathematics Exam Qualifier and the Mathematical Olympiad Qualifier. Also was selected to be part of the All-State Orchestra. He's a National Merit finalist, and next year, he will be attending Carnegie Mellon University. Albert.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer and school committee, for having me here. It's a great honor to be here again. So, everyone has been thanking teachers, and that's what I've been told to do, so that's what I'll do. So, this year, the name that comes to mind is Mr. Collins, as you've probably heard like five times already. Mr. Collins has taught me for two years as a sophomore and as a senior, but I've known him for four years. So, in freshman year, he was one of the math team captains. And in sophomore year, I had him for BC Calculus. I was that one sophomore sitting in the back row with no friends on the side. And he was like pretty much one of my only friends in that class. This year, he is also the advisor for Muafa Theta, or Math National Honor Society. And I've had a great pleasure, the great pleasure of working with him. I've also had him for math modeling. He's taught me that math is not just a theoretical thing, it has many practical applications. And he's, he's shaped me into someone who really wants to do math in the future. Additionally, Mr. Collins is sarcastic, says funny things, and throws pigs and markers at sleeping students. Someone else I want to recognize is Mr. Collins, Mr. Collins' son, who is a physics teacher. This is his first year teaching AP Physics, yet he brings this energy and knowledge to the class. Like his father, he's quite good at throwing markers. And he's also taken the time to really demonstrate the concepts that we've been learning. Yesterday, I was the one person that showed up to class because we had an AP test. And instead of having a study, we sat down the electrodes of water and the hydrogen gas on fire. So, in middle school, I'd like to thank Mrs. Friedman, who was the advanced math teacher there, for all the one-on-one time she spent with me. She was instrumental in my development as a mathematician. I'd also like to thank Mr. K., or Mr. Carriga. He was my eighth-grade social studies teacher. That was the first class that I really had to study for, but he made it fun and challenging at the same time. Another one of my teachers is Mr. H.T. I like how he has good knowledge of memes. And he makes bad puns and bad jokes, and he has even worse spelling, which is great, actually. It gives us something to laugh about. And finally, I'd like to thank my family for supporting me, and especially my brother for being my mentor throughout my high school career. Thank you.
Thank you, Albert. And the last scholar we'll honor this evening, again alphabetically, is Jamie Way. Jamie does tutoring. She's an avid tennis player. And she's a member of several honor societies, including a leadership role with the different literary publications of Shrewsbury High School. She was instrumental in hosting the first-ever SHS Poetry Slam. She also does, where she's contributed to the creative arts at the high school. Very passionate about writing. She'll be pursuing her degree next year at Dartmouth College. Please welcome Jamie.
Hello. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer and the school committee, committee for having me here. First and foremost, I'd like to thank my parents and my mom, right over there, for always supporting me and guiding me when I couldn't guide myself, which is basically all the time. I'd also like to thank my brothers, Ethan and Jaden, who are hopefully watching this right now. They always keep me grounded and they make me laugh. So, yeah, I'm just gonna name some teachers like everyone else has been doing. Ms. Chico, thank you for not only teaching me physics, but also I very much enjoy her impromptu speeches, ranging from staying safe in school to not obsessing over your grades. I'd like to thank Madame Pourd, my French teacher. She's probably one of the most honest and open people I've ever met. And she teaches me about the universal connection all people have, regardless of language or culture. And she also, every Friday, she writes a jo- a joke in French on the board. So, they always make my day on the occasion that I understand them. Thank you to Mr. Sessino for just being himself. He's my AP Lit teacher. And he makes the last period of the day really exciting, whether we're dancing around in a circle and acting a play, or just laughing uncomfortably about Slaughterhouse Five. And lastly, I'd like to take it all the way back to elementary school. I went to Spring Street School, and my fourth-grade teacher, Mrs. Travers, has been really influential to me. She was obsessed with smiley faces, and her room had just like, everything was smiley face themed. face themed. And I remember when we were taking MCAS, she would like go around and sprinkle smarticle particle, like magical dust on her heads. So, yeah, thank you, Mrs. Travers, for reminding me that optimism is always an option. Yeah, again, thank you, everyone, for having me.
So as the committee and those in the audience and those watching can see, we have 10 extraordinary students here, very articulate and poised as well, and appreciate all the recognition of the many educators who influenced them, who stood out to them during their careers at Shrewsbury. And again, we're pleased, after the school committee has a chance to make any comments, we have a small token of appreciation to congratulate them for their success.
Colleagues, any comments?
Well, I would say that we feel that the best investment a community can make is in the school system, and if anybody doubts that, they just need to look at you. It may well be that the resources we provide, the teachers and everything else make a difference, but we know that you make a difference and your parents did as well. They may well have moved into this community because of the good schools, but as we look at you today and as we look at all the hard work you and your parents have done, you're the reason why other people are going to move into this community in the future. So, thank you.
Mr. Wensman.
First off, I'd like to thank you all for presenting to us today. I know you thanked us a number of times, but it's very inspirational, all of you. Appreciate it. You make me want to be a better multitasker. I don't know how you do it all.
You're tall, John.
Yeah, well, I'm getting there, but I'm really inspired by how you balance all of all these extracurricular activities in addition to your day-to-day academics. And I think, you know, I think we see and we hear that its success, you know, is a team effort, right? It's the students, it's the parents, and it's the educators. And I'm always taken by how you call out, you know, your teachers that inspired you along the way, whether it be elementary with Ms. Gallagher, Ms. Travers, or middle school, Mr. Bezuto, Dr. Gudicants, and then high school, you know, Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Brown, just some of the names that we heard today. I think it spans all grade levels, and it's always just amazing to hear you reference who inspired you throughout your educational journey. It's really, it's really the people that make this. The educators, the personnel in our schools that drive the success. So congratulations to you all, and thank you again.
Mrs. Fritz.
Congratulations. It is amazing, every year when we sit here and we go through the top 10, it seems like there's more and more accolades and really impressive work. I'm glad to hear that you have extracurriculars and academics. You're all smart, that's gonna take you far, but your extracurriculars, I think, are where you're learning to work with each other and branch out just from academics. And, I mean, many of us have people say, why, why do you do school committee work? Why do you, you know, spend all those hours? And it's for nights like tonight. It's humbling for us to have students come and we see the success that the district does, and the very small part that we have as a school committee. It's really nice to see this come to fruition at the end, so congratulations.
I think Mary said it, so. One Gonzano has spoken.
Gotcha. To each of you, I am in awe of you, and I, and I know I'm not alone in this, I feel woefully inadequate in your presence, and will continue to do so for many years to come. I believe we have some recognitions for each of our honorees.
We do, and I, and I also understand, we actually have Representative Kane, who's joined us, who's gonna be on the agenda a little bit later, and I understand that you also have some citations for the students.
Congratulations.
Some letters, congratulations. So perhaps we can do this, if it works, we'll have the scholars come up and shake the committee's hands and the administrator's hands, we have a token here, and if you have the letters, if you want to join us, Representative Kane, and at the end of the line, and we'll do a two-for-one. How's that? So congratulations, come on up, and, and how about one more round of applause for our senior scholar.
Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
Here you go. All right. Albert. There you are. Congratulations. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations.
I too feel.
And let's see. Great job. Great job. Congratulations. Good luck next year.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Actually, if our honorees could stay up front, we're gonna do a quick photo for the committee. All right, members, move out from the front of the bench.
This is happening somehow.
Congratulations. Good luck next year.
All right, move in, move in.
So we're gonna have you guys move really scrunched up towards the other side, because everybody has to get in this somehow.
Sure, members in the front.
That's right. So that would be me.
Maybe a couple of the school committee members on the other side, next to Dr. Sawyer.
All right. Everybody got it? Three, two, one. Gonna resume our agenda.
Here we go.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you to our honorees. The next item on our agenda this evening is a visit from Shrewsbury High School Student Advisory Committee and their report. School districts are required to have a student advisory committee consisting of five high school students who are elected by the student body. The SAC meets with the school committee during the year to review various issues of concern to the student body, and Mr. Andrew Smith is, who is an SHS Social Sciences teacher, serves as the faculty advisor to the SAC. We will now hear the report of the SAC, and once everyone gets situated, we'll have them go down the line and introduce themselves.
As always, thank you for having us. This is the last presentation for the school year, we're putting on Maya, but meantime, we'll go down the line and introduce.
She'll join you in due course.
I'm Ben George, I'm a senior.
I'm Precious Singh, I'm a junior.
I'm Erica Hanlon, I'm also a junior.
I'm Polly Roscosi, I'm a junior.
And my McCollum, who was just recognized, is of course on the SAC as well.
Our first agenda item is events at SHS. With the 2017-2018 school year nearing a close, students are participating and finding success in numerous extracurriculars while the seniors are concluding their time at SHS. Seniors started the countdown to the end of the year with the 50-day breakfast, and as many seniors currently taking AP exams over the course of these two weeks, the top 10 seniors were recognized for academic success at the Top Ten Breakfast on April 26. Additionally, over the next couple of weeks, the seniors will be attending the Senior Picnic on Thursday, May 24th, for a fun-filled day of lawn games and food on Dean Park, followed by the Senior Prom at the DCU Center on Friday, and commemoration at Mechanics Hall on Tuesday, May 29th. Our time at SHS culminates with the infamous Senior Faculty Dance to be held at the Doubletree Hotel the night before graduation. As a senior, I can say, come Thursday, May 31st, SHS has prepared me for the next part of my journey.
For the second time this year, the whole of SHS came together for our Spring Spirit Rally on Friday, April 13. The school had an amazing time competing in the rally events such as the Piggyback Relay and Team Asteroids. The Class Cup results were also announced, with the freshmen coming in 4th place, the sophomores in 3rd, the seniors in 2nd place, and the juniors winning the Class Cup. We also celebrated the seniors' last spirit rally as we watched all the lip dubs that the class of 2018 had made over the years, and congratulated them on a successful four years at SHS. It was an overall amazing way to start off April vacation, and the school enjoyed it immensely.
So far this spring, National Honor Societies at SHS have been hosting various events. On Friday, April 6th, the National Honor Society held a Coffee House event, where many students came to SHS to listen to musical performances and enjoy baked goods and coffee. On Friday, April 27th, the National Chinese Honor Society held Under the Chinese Lantern at Sherwood Middle School. This fundraiser was aimed to spread Chinese culture in Shrewsbury through performances and interactive activities. Overall, the event was a great success. In addition, the National Honor Society will be having their induction ceremony tomorrow night, where new members will be welcomed and seniors will receive their cords.
The next agenda item is student accomplishments.
As we wrap up the year, students have much to be proud of in their academics or extracurricular activities. The speech and debate team had a great finish to their season when they finished 2nd at the state final with individual state champions Will Stavich, Megan German, Sophia Pang, Max Evers, and Leah DeHaemer in multiple reading, Ahana Mukapati in radio broadcasting, Shereen Asong in prose, and one of our own, Precious Singh in children's literature. Now they look forward to the upcoming speech and debate showcase on Saturday, May 19th, as well as NCAA Nationals over Memorial Day weekend and NSBA Nationals in June.
Back in February, Research Methods Biology and Research Methods Chemistry hosted their own science fair in the SHS Media Center. Students from all grades had the opportunity to visit this fair and learn about the projects researched by their classmates. The students who ranked from SHS then had the opportunity to compete at the regional fair. Six students who ranked highly at regionals were then able to compete at the state fair, where sophomore Lana Wang received an honorable mention, freshman Grima Pavakar received 3rd place, freshman Shreya Chidabaru received 2nd place, and sophomore Zoe Rudnick received 1st place. Whether it be a new type of solar-powered battery or computer code designed for moon-rover navigation, SHS showcased their talent in STEM. With the team growing to over 100 active members, SHS Robotics ended the 2017-2018 school year with one of the best seasons on record. The year is divided with two seasons, the build season and the competition season. Throughout the build season, the team designs and builds their robot. During this time, the high school team ran 17 first-league middle school teams, hosted the largest statewide first Lego League qualifier, and baked over 800 apple pies to support local charities. From a competitive standpoint, the team earned the prestigious Chairman's Award for promoting STEM within the community, and a creativity award for the ramps their robots used to lift other robots. In the end, the team was able to advance to Worlds in Detroit, Michigan.
In addition to surpassing our 100,000-hour goal in January, the year has been a successful one for community service, as the school accumulated 22,676 logged hours this year. The freshman class completed 3,005 hours, the sophomore 7,051 hours, the junior 8,699 hours, and the senior 3,919 hours. And the seniors graduate with a total of 15,923 hours completed in their four years at SHS. At the service awards ceremony, junior Caitlin Mooney was awarded with the Amy O'Leary Award of Distinction for her work as a middle school mentor at WPI and as a ski assistant at Mount Snow.
The third and final agenda item is continuing conversations.
As the year comes to a close, SAC would like to follow up on some of the items we've reported on throughout the year. During April break, 17 students had the opportunity to visit Beijing, China. Each student on the trip was paired with a host student from Dongjimen Middle School in Beijing. The American students were able to spend the mornings and nights with their host family, where students were able to experience the Chinese culture. The American students also enjoyed bonding with their host families, and many became good friends by the end of the trip.
After spending the first day with our host family, we continued our trip by visiting a multitude of popular tourist attractions and authentic places of Chinese culture, including Tiananmen Square, the Forbidden City, three different temples, the Great Wall, the Summer Palace, the Beijing Zoo, and of course, plenty of places where we ate delicious food and bargained for some souvenirs.
Overall, our trip to China was incredibly unique. Not only were we able to tour some of the most famous sites in China, we also learned a lot about daily life. We got to observe classes in a Chinese school, talk to high school students just like ourselves, and live with real Chinese families. This cultural exchange is incredibly important in a globalizing world, and we hope to continue this program in the future.
There is a new club at SHS called the Student Wellness Ambassador Team, or SWAT. With one of the district goals being to focus more on mental health and wellness in schools, student council met with the head of the Family and Consumer Education Department, Ms. Garcia, along with health teacher Mrs. Bertnik and director of student counseling, Ms. Wen, to talk about creating a Wellness Week at SHS. SWAT was formed as a result and will promote mental wellness and work to better the overall health of the student body throughout the year. In addition to organizing a Wellness Week in the fall, where students will learn how to deal or avoid stress, and relax and manage their time in a non-stressful way. About 50 students have signed up as of now, showing the great interest that SHS has in student wellness.
As the year comes to a close, discussions about classes for the 2018-2019 school year are already taking place. With growing student enrollment, SHS is forced to make difficult decisions between balancing course requests and class sizes. Electives such as Global Studies, AP Latin, AP Music Theory, World Religions, and America in the World Today will not run due to lack of course requests to justify running them at the expense of core classes and other high-demand electives. In our past presentation, we reported on new classes that would potentially run next year, including Work Study and Foundations of Physical Education. We are happy to report that these courses had a considerable amount of interest among students. One important note, however, in order to run the Work Study Program, each assistant principal will be taking on a group of students they will oversee in the pilot year. This is to prevent overly burdening guidance counselors with another responsibility. Another notable change for the next year are the addition of both a math and special education teacher. This is predicted to reduce class sizes in both areas. One example would be AP BC Calculus, which ran this year with two sections and were close to about 30 students per section. With about 80 students signing up for the class next year, the addition of a math teacher will significantly aid in balancing class sizes. As always, we encourage the school committee to continue to work on developing such solutions as SHS continues to grow.
Last Tuesday on May 1st, SHS's pre-calculus classes took a full-day field trip to the reality fair, where they simulated how much life was going to cost after high school. We were able to choose different professions and fields and received salaries and credit scores to work with. It was an eye-opening experience, and we thank all the wonderful volunteers that took time out of their day to set it up for us. We were also fortunate enough to listen to famous speaker Dr. Bridget Cooper as she encouraged us to take control over our lives and manage our future. It was an overall amazing experience that we are very thankful for.
Lastly, upperclassmen last week witnessed the mock accident, an event put together with the help of the Shrewsbury Police and Fire Departments, as well as the UMass EMTs and the Chiampa Funeral Home. It was a humbling and emotional experience, and it reminded us the importance of driver safety.
That concludes our agenda for our final presentation to you guys. We're open to any questions, if you may have any.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions, comments? Dr. McGee.
Very interesting presentation. Any comments you can make regarding the differences in the classes in China versus here? Is there a different style of teaching or the like?
Oh, well, I think it's a lot different in terms of, you know, like, the classroom is set up pretty similar, but there's a lot less group work and a lot more, I think, teacher lecturing, if that makes, like, there's a lot more teacher-to-student, whereas here it's a lot more student-to-student interactions and debates and more interactive learning.
How big was the class size?
Far larger than ours. I'd say there's about maybe 50 students per classroom.
Thanks. Question, Mrs. Gonzano.
Yeah, the reality check experience, I know the juniors at the table, I was wondering what some of your takeaways might be from that, that you might be able to carry into your senior year.
One thing was that I did not know what a credit score was going into it at all. They actually helped a lot in terms of like, not just explaining what it meant to us for that day only, but also what it would mean for us in the future, and also the connections we made between the different stations. For example, how a credit score would impact buying a car or the loans we would have to pay. And I think that was really helpful in connecting the different things rather than just learning each station individually.
I also found that it helped me a lot to prepare for the future because I realized I didn't know how much everything costs in the real world, so it was very interesting to have a budget and realize what you need to manage for your time and money.
Right. It was truly a reality check for me. I didn't understand a lot of what went into, you know, being an adult, and you see all the adults around you managing their time, you know, being people, and you don't realize what they do behind the scenes with their money and their salaries. I mean, I had $700 in my savings account. That was a reality check when I couldn't pay for my housing, and I had to pay out of my credit card. It was like an eye-opening experience, and I think it's really gonna help me in the future when, you know, I actually have to do this stuff.
And a follow-up, if I may. Thank you, that's wonderful experience that you shared with us. Oh, what I also wanted to do is thank the seniors at the table for their service. You've been here, I think, at least three years.
Yes.
And that would be Ms. McCollum and Mr. George.
And so, thank you so much for that, and I didn't know if you'd like to share what your next steps are for the fall.
All right. I'm attending Case Western Reserve University out in Ohio, studying engineering.
And I'll be attending UMass Amherst studying economics.
Excellent. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Excellent. Further comments, questions? Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you for your presentation and for the leadership you've exhibited all year and being, I know it's not only at the school committee meetings, but that you serve as an important voice advising Mr. Bezilo, working with the other members of the student government to lead among your peers. I'm curious if you could speak a little bit more to this new student wellness team.
It was truly a reality check for me. I didn't uh understand a lot of what went into, you know, being an adult, and you see all the adults around you managing their time, you know, being people, and you don't realize what they do behind the scenes with their money and their salaries. I mean, I had seven hundred dollars in my savings account. That was a reality check when I couldn't pay for my housing. And I had to pay out of my credit card. It was like an eye-opening experience, and I think it's really gonna help me in the future when, you know, I actually have to do this stuff.
And a follow-up if I may. Thank you. That's wonderful uh uh ex- um experience that you shared with us. Oh, what I also wanted to do is uh thank the seniors at the table for their service. You've been here, I think, at least three years.
Yes.
And if not, if not.
McCollum and Mr. George.
And and so thank you so much for that, and I didn't know if you'd like to share what your next steps are um for the fall.
All right. Um, I'm attending uh Case Western Reserve University out in Ohio, studying um engineering.
And I'll be attending UMass Amherst studying economics.
Excellent. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Excellent. Further comments, questions? Dr. Sawyer?
Uh, thank you for your presentation and and for the leadership you've exhibited all year and being, I know it's not only at the school committee meetings, but uh that you serve as an important voice advising Mr. Buzillo, working with the other uh members of the student government to lead uh among your peers. Um, I I'm curious if you could speak a little bit more to this new uh student wellness team uh and uh talking a little bit about the potential you might see for that going forward. Uh, it certainly, as you mentioned, is a really critically important strategic priority for us. Um, and uh having something that's student-driven uh is of great interest to me, and and I'm curious as to any thoughts you might have about how the school can support that and how we can uh make it successful in the future.
It was very um preliminary. Um, so this was like an informational meeting, so the actual organization of the week and everything um is happening at the beginning of next ye- uh school year. So the student um council met and they organized it, and they thought they wanted to get involvement, not just within student government, but also within the broader um SHS community, so they created SWAT so they could have feedback so that when they actually run the year um the week, um, it could be successful. Um, but it's as of right now, very preliminary, so uh we- I truly don't have that much information to report.
Well, it's something that can please bring back to your your peers that um any way we can support that work, I'm I'm sure Mr. Buzillo feels similarly, that we can uh uh try to promote that, because I think it's it's uh always uh incredibly influential when peers are having those conversations with peers as well as the adults in the school community. So um again, thank you for your leadership and thank you for your service. Um, and we do have a certificate here as a as a token of recognition for the work that you've done. And so if you'd be so kind as to come up and shake the committee's hand and receive this, we appreciate that.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. There you go. I know. You'll have to be able to swap.
Congratulations.
Good job, Ben. Thank you.
Goodness, you. Thank you.
And as the next item on our agenda, we are very fortunate tonight to receive our annual legislative report from State Representative Hannah Kane. Uh, Representative Kane represents the eleventh Worcester District, and we're very fortunate to have her uh before the school committee each spring. Uh, just as we're getting the chair set up, I know that the House has just finished uh its budget process, obviously the Senate uh taking up its process this week. Uh, so welcome, Representative Kane, and we uh look forward to your update.
Thank you. And congratulations on your reorganization and uh your reelection, John, to the to the board. Glad to see you back here. I know it was a close call. So I think it's just cool to actually invite me to speak after the two presentations, to be honest with you. I'm back there going, dear God. But it really speaks um perfectly about why we all value um the Shrewsbury Public Schools so highly, um to see the caliber of students um that we produce all across the spectrum. Um, I think, you know, ideally, each student that we have here is uh learning to their highest potential, and we saw some amazing students tonight. But I know that every time I enter a school, I'm always coming across students who are enthusiastic learners, happy to be where they are, and knowing that they're very fortunate to be where they are, um which I think is a really great uh sign of our students understanding that this community values education and wants to give them the best opportunity in life, so. Um, I believe I was here the same week last year, which was the National Teacher Appreciation Week and the National um School Nurse Day. Um, and I am very fortunate. Um, our three children that Jim and I have in the Shrewsbury Public Schools, a junior, a sophomore, and a sixth grader, are all thriving uh in their own ways um in the school system and um very acquainted with the nurses. Um, um, and they do a fantastic job. But it was really wonderful to hear these students talking about the teachers who had impacted them through the course of their educational experience, and many of those teachers' names I recognize from my own students, my own children having been students in those classrooms, so it was wonderful to hear. Um, I also want to congratulate you on the uh US News and World Report rankings that are out today. Not only is Massachusetts number one again, um but Shrewsbury is ranked forty-seventh, I believe, um and really a testament to all the work that you all do, leading the school system and the administrators uh managing uh and leading as well. So thank you for that. Um, and I was fortunate, and although I couldn't be there, I did get to see the video, um and I thank Dr. Sawyer for sending it out. But it was wonderful to have um the students uh coming into the State House during the celebration of the twenty-fifth anniversary of the landmark education reform, and to have the empowered learners video playing there. I think that's a real treat. Um, I knew uh my legislative partner Jessica Bellview was happy to be able to see it um and to accompany you on that day. And Senator Moore and I were uh very um happy to host the winning Shrewsbury Boys Hockey Team um a couple weeks ago at the State House. Uh, they were, many of them had not been there before, so it was fun to show them around, um take them out on the balcony and and let them look over the common, uh which is a real treat. Um, really fantastic group of athletes, uh and was also on hand the day that they won at the uh TD Garden, which was really exciting to see. Um, and the senator and I are always um looking forward to having our youth come into the building to illustrate to them how public service really works. It's not just what you see on TV, that there is a a productive uh group of people who come together to do the good work that is necessary to do in the Commonwealth, and certainly enjoy any opportunity to go into the schools to be part of that as well. Um, I was also very fortunate to have received an invitation several weeks ago from Dr. Sawyer to speak at the Worcester County Superintendent's Association and to update uh the superintendents in Worcester County about some of the work that we're doing at the State House, some of which I'll certainly touch on here today. Um, but it is always good to get out and hear from the front line of educators, from their perspective, what are the things that we should be focusing on at the State House. Um, I also uh toured this week a Chapter Seven Six Six school because my father is now uh the head of one um in West Newton. So I am now getting um a full ear on the other side of the coin. Um, and uh it is a school, the Learning Prep School, in which we've had several students from Shrewsbury actually attend over the years. So it was great to to go there, um and having talked with uh Meg Belcito about the school um and the opportunity that our students have had there. Um, but it is a balancing act, and we're aware of that at the state level. Um, and so uh anytime I can get inside a school and really understand the work that is going into some of the the programs that they are developing to work with our students who are sent out of district is very beneficial. And I think also we're very fortunate here in Shrewsbury to have so many of our students also kept in district as well. And so I really appreciate all the work that you all do to ensure that opportunity exists. Um, I also am a member of SCAPE um along with uh your chairman as well. Um, and and last fall, we hosted Dr. Ruth Poddy at the high school. Um, and we are looking this fall to do a piece really targeted at the middle school parents, um which will be on vaping uh tobacco, alcohol, marijuana, really starting to lay the groundwork for how to prepare your kids for when they do enter um into late middle school and to high school for some of the things that they will probably be challenged by and and to have some full knowledge on that. And that is something that I really enjoy working on here in the community. Today, we actually passed in the House um a a bill on tobacco, which raises the age um across the state to twenty-one years of age to be able to purchase um tobacco, and that will bring in line, along with alcohol and with marijuana, the age of purchase. Hundred and seventy communities in the Commonwealth already are at the age of twenty-one, so this brings the rest of them in line. The Senate passed a version last session, so I have no doubt they will quickly take this up and pass this, um and I uh believe that the governor will sign it. I also just wanted to mention that we have coming up on Saturday, uh May nineteenth, Armed Forces Day, our fourth annual celebration for that, and certainly would welcome all of you to come. Um, we really want to make sure that especially our young people understand that a lot of times what they see is Memorial Day and Veterans Day, very somber days, that um celebrating our armed forces and the people who are retired and active military and making sure they understand that we're grateful for their sacrifice and that this is an extremely um noble thing to do, if that is what you are interested in doing to serve our country. Um, so in this session, um I am the ranking minority member on the Joint Committee on Public Health, as well as the Joint Committee on Marijuana Policy. I also sit on the Mental Health Substance Use Recovery Joint Committee, as well as the Transportation Committee. Um, outside of that, I have a couple other assignments, including serving on the Mass Food Policy Council, serving on a special commission on local and regional public health, and also serving on another special commission, which is yet to get underway, but one that is looking at addressing the healthcare inequality in the Commonwealth, and certainly Dr. McGee will be my go-to individual um on some of that, some of those issues. But as uh Mr. Pelliche mentioned, we just wrapped up the House budget, and um it was um a new budget cycle for us in that we have a new chairman of House Ways and Means. Um, so this year, we actually took four days to debate the budget. Last year, it was done in two days, which was probably too soon, too quick. Um, this year, we had almost fourteen hundred amendments filed um to the budget by my fellow colleagues. Um, I had filed several myself, um some of which uh were a priority, and one certainly for the the district that continues to be a priority, and I'll mention that in a minute. Um, the Senate is coming out with their budget on May tenth. They will debate it in about another week and a half. As we debate this, this is the first budget I've been a part of in which we've actually had revenues that were on the upside of where we anticipated being. We're up about eight hundred and nine million dollars right now on where we thought we would be at this point in time, so. Um, while that is good news, uh the downside is we're not sure if some of that revenue was sort of prepaid in relative to some of the federal tax reform. Um, and we also don't know what's gonna happen in November with some of the ballot questions. So it's difficult to really understand what's the right number to base our fiscal year nineteen budget on, based on the fact that we have um a millionaire's tax on the ballot, we have um a bringing back the sales tax to five percent. Um, and so how some of these things will work out um will deeply impact um the budget as it uh is developed right now. Hopefully, we've done a good job at trying to be conservative enough that there's some rule to play at the same time still funding those things that we think are critically important. So the House budget, as it wrapped up, was about forty-one point five billion dollars. And from Shrewsbury's perspective, we saw an increase of about ninety-seven thousand dollars over last year's uh local aid number, um and we saw about a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar increase in terms of the Chapter Seventy funds. I was part of a group that uh signed on to advocate for a fifty-dollar minimum aid. It ended up increasing, the governor filed, he came in at twenty million dollars, the House budget came in at thir- uh thirty dollars per minimum aid. So it was a slight increase from that. Certainly, I'm always looking to increase that number because I know that it is extremely helpful. Um, and a couple of years ago, we were able to get fifty-five dollars, and that was a a a good chunk of change that we could use in our, certainly our school budget here. Um, we saw an increase of about eighteen point nine million dollars in the special education um circuit breaker reimbursement. We also, in the supplemental um budget bill, which is in conference committee right now, the House and Senate have each passed, there's some differences, so it's in conference. There was also twelve and a half million dollars that both chambers put into the budget to add to this year, which would bring up to about seventy-two percent the reimbursement rate, um which was unfortunately um not fully funded at seventy-five percent, even though people thought they were fully funding it at seventy-five percent in the budget last year. But due to some of the increases that came in in tuition that had not been expected or planned for, it brought the rate down overall. So um there will likely be, before the end of the year, another supplemental budget, if that happens. I think there'll probably be some of us who will again try and insert to get to that seventy-five percent reimbursement level. I can't promise that's going to actually happen, but a lot of what we are hearing from cities and towns right now with the revenue up where they are is really that um the effort to help fund things on a local level um more so. So certainly, uh I will uh relay what I'm sure you're going to tell me tonight, that you think that's very important um as we move forward uh with both the supplemental uh budget as bill, as well as the um conference bill that will come out eventually, once the House and the Senate uh negotiate the differences between their two bills. One of the other things um that has always been a priority for me as the budget gets filed each year is the non-resident people transportation line item. Um, as I've mentioned to you before, um I find it odd that despite having the same commitment through regional transportation line item and through non-resident um for the Commonwealth to reimburse cities and towns fully for those expenses, uh the regional transportation ends up always around seventy, seventy-two, seventy-three percent reimbursement. And the non-resident, um which has a similar number of communities, each of about a hundred communities who rely on reimbursement for those accounts, that can range anywhere. Um, in the past few years, uh it has been as high as fifty-three percent. This year, it's at six point four percent. Um, the good news is on it, you actually don't have to put a lot of money in it to get to that parity level, which is what I keep trying to convince House Ways and Means every year. Um, it would only be, um overall, it's about a four million dollar at a full hundred percent reimbursement versus our regional transportation, which is in the high sixties now. So when the uh governor's budget came out, he had two hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred in it, which is what was carried last year. The House budget um did not fund it, so I had to fight not only to put money into it, but actually get the line item back in. Um, and that's always a chief concern to me, because once a line item is gone from one year's budget, getting it back ever is going to be extremely difficult. So um it was not included in the Consolidated Education Amendment, um and I went back again and uh made known that I thought it was really important. And in the end, they included it in the technical amendment, which is the last amendment that we get asked to vote on, and the only amendment we actually don't see before we vote on. So I I voted um hoping that the money would be in there, and uh was happy that it was. One of the other um things that came out uh in the technical amendment this year is also uh a s- a commission, a special commission that would look at regional transportation funding. And it would look at not only regional transportation, but the out-of-district to ag schools, uh and even special education placement funding. That is something that we're hoping the Senate will include in their budget as well. Um, it's something that we think is very important. I can't tell you how many House members along with me think um that we are not doing what we need to be doing in terms of the reimbursement levels for transportation. So very hopeful that we'll move forward. There was another uh commission, the Foundation Budget Review Commission, that was attempted to get in the budget. It was not in the final analysis. Um, but again, there are uh many of my colleagues along um uh with myself who think it's very important that we don't sunset that commission, that we continue to have it, and we continue to look at ways to improve the foundation budget formula, as well as looking at how do we actually fund what we just got done saying that we are not funding enough. So we will continue to make that a priority as we move ahead. In terms of um other priorities for me in the House budget, I filed um a budget amendment seeking money for Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. They have had the last three years um a SAMSA grant um for youth mental health first aid. This is the final year of that three-year grant. They had a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year that they got. We trained um over six hundred and fifty people, um many of them people in the schools, not only in Shrewsbury, but all across central Massachusetts and in and actually across Massachusetts as a whole, um looking at ways to identify our youth who may be uh in a time of crisis and have not yet voiced it uh in a way that somebody can respond to. Um, through that effort, and these numbers are old, because these numbers are from when I submitted my letter to uh Ways and Means, which was back in February. Um, but we had, at that point, three hundred and seventy-five um youth had been uh referred for services out of the six hundred and fifty people who had been trained and recognized that they had youth around them. So we filed um funding to see if we could get the state to fund um another year of the grant, because there is in fact a waiting list that Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services has. Um, in the end, we got fifty thousand dollars. I'm very confident that Senator Moore will be able to carry money for that as well on the Senate side, and hopefully it will come out in the conference budget. But given what you all see happening in the schools, and we all know as parents, uh I think it's critical that we find ways to continue that effort and that training. Um, I also fi- filed a budget amendment for the Health and Incentive Program, um which is an effort to provide fresh locally grown produce to people who receive SNAP um benefits. And it also has uh an added benefit of coming right out of our local farms, and so it's aiding um our farming community as well. Something I think is important, and certainly the issues of having students who are in school and who are hungry. Um, we know if they're hungry, they're not able to learn, and so that's an issue that's very important to me and one uh I've worked closely with the Worcester County Food Bank on. So changing for a minute from the budget to legislation, um I did file again this year, and uh Mr. Collins came in and testified uh an act to allow school districts to collect a fee associated with non-resident people transportation. Um, and that is an effort to say, if you're not going to fully fund this, then you would need need to at least allow school districts who currently charge a bus fee, allow them to charge it for students who are taking these buses. Um, it makes no sense from a from a parent perspective um to not have parity between that, regardless of which bus your your child is getting on and where it's going that day. And obviously, these buses um that are dedicated buses, who can only do one route going to Assabett, we're not able to get sort of that added uh extra routes out of. So um that is something that was voted favorably out of the Education Committee and is now in third reading. Um, and I have not yet pushed um hard on third reading to release that bill, because um the priority bill for me right now is a Glavine bill, um which just landed in third reading actually today. So we have moved that um out of its initial hearing uh on the committee. It went to House Ways and Means. Uh, House Ways and Means took another look at it. They voted it out in their poll on Tuesday, and uh today Steering released it very quickly. They had it less than twenty-four hours.
Elaborate for the folks watching at home.
Yes, I will. And so um this bill is important because uh as you all know, uh it is now the preferred site um for the new potential K through four school that we're working on with the MSBA. The uh legislation is required because DCAM, the Division of Capital Asset Management, uh will be uh transferring the land, some of it um at a dollar cost and some of it at um a fee to us um that we will be paying for, for the general municipal use property. Because it involves Article Ninety-seven, uh not only is it important for us on our timeline here in Shrewsbury to get this bill moved through, but we are in the second year of our legislative our legislative session, which means our formal session ends on July thirty-first, and this bill requires a roll call vote. So we need to make sure the Senate or I get it through the House and the Senate before that. We are working very diligently on that. It is a challenge, I will tell you, simply because this time of year, there are many, many bills that have gotten voted out of committee, and everyone is lobbying to get their bill moved. But this is one that I have apprised not only leadership in my party, but also the Speaker, that is incredibly important for us to get this bill moved. And so I feel confident that we will, just not exactly at the pace that any of us would prefer that it move at. And unfortunately, third reading can be a committee in which it can take quite a bit of time to get things through. Once it leaves third reading for the House, we'll be smooth sailing out of the House and into the Senate. But Senator Moore and I and our team are working very diligently in making sure that we move this. And we have stressed very much that not only the MSBA process requires site control, but our own timeline in which we want to move this, not only from a voting perspective, but from a construction timeline perspective, requires us to have urgency on this bill. So we will continue to push that. Finally, I wanted to bring up a bill that has moved through the Senate. It was voted about a month ago, probably now in the Senate, but it is a civic education bill. It's S two-three-seven-five, an act to promote and enhance civic education. I can tell you, and I've shared this story before, I know that civic education is required because during the confirmation hearings for Betsy DeVos, who was up for Secretary of Education, I got about a hundred emails asking me not to vote to confirm her in office, which, you know, is always interesting, because I have absolutely no role in the federal level appointments of the President. But I did think it was excellent that people were advocating for something, and we simply referred them on to the Senators who would be voting on that, Markey and Warren. So I think we all can agree that civic education is incredibly important. The challenge for me on this bill is that it came out of the Senate as a mandated graduation requirement, and that has some concern relative to moving forward. I know that the, that is not how it came out of Education Committee. It did not have that mandate for graduation on it. It was added in the Senate. The House leadership, I know, is not comfortable with that. So we will likely take this bill up in the House. I think it was very likely, though, that when it comes out of the House, it will not have that mandate on it, which means it will go to a conference committee. There are some very good elements of the bill. And again, you know, we know in Massachusetts, only one in five young people voted in the twenty-fourteen midterm election. I was reading an article two summers ago, which said that young people believe that their greatest way to make change is through social media rather than through voting. And so we have work to do to make sure that our students understand that both ways are very good ways to make change, but in effect, when you are choosing not to go vote, you are actually affecting change by not going to vote. So I think, you know, we have seen in Shrewsbury certainly all of the volunteer work that is done. I think we've done a great job in instilling in our students here that sense of civic responsibility. I also think because we've had many votes, I know, in my own children, I see, having been through the debt exclusion for Sherwood, having been through the override, they understand that level of civic engagement that's necessary to be part of your community. But I think, you know, across Massachusetts, different school districts, you find students have a very disparate level of knowledge and understanding of civic engagement and why it matters. And so the goal of this bill is to make sure that all students coming out of Massachusetts public schools have that strong sense of responsibility and understanding of why it's important. So I will keep you apprised as that bill moves. I have actually heard from some of the teachers in the district who teach civics and social studies with some concerns and with some advocacy on this bill. And so I would love to have people continue to reach out to me with what their concerns or suggestions are as we move forward. And then finally, I would just say, before certainly opening it up for your questions, that it is, continues to be a great honor to represent Shrewsbury and Westboro on Beacon Hill, two great communities who show their commitment to education on their sleeves. And I really want to stress that, you know, for many of us who serve in the House of Representatives, it can be a challenge sometimes with communities in terms of getting folks to weigh in and folks to pay attention to some of the issues that are going on there. And I really want to thank you, not only for the letters that you send sort of in support of things that are going on, that's very helpful for me to have, but really just for your overall engagement and your willingness to be strong allies in terms of this, this work that we're all doing, to make sure that our schools and our communities receive as much funding as possible, so that all students have an equal opportunity to excel across the field of play. Which reminds me, I also want to congratulate you all on the achievement of getting to, I know we're down to the final dollars on the turf field, but that's really quite an achievement, and very happy to have seen our community come together. I think it's going to be an excellent opening day at some point, where we see our students out playing on that field, and certainly will provide a lot more, I think, competition in the area than we've had in the past, in terms of when our students haven't been able to get on the field or to host something. So I congratulate you all on making that a priority and getting it done.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions, comments? This is Fritz.
Thank you for pushing on that Glavine issue, because for us, like you said, this is really time sensitive, and it's a project that we need to alleviate overcrowding. So thank you, because I know you have a lot of pressures on you to put things before something else. And also a question, I mean, we talk a lot about vocational, technical schools. Is there any discussion at the state level of building more? And I know they're very expensive to build.
Yes.
I mean, is there any talk about looking into that, because there's such pent-up demand?
There has, there has been talk among colleagues of mine about how critical it is, and there is definitely an awareness of the value of vocational school education. You know, the, across the Commonwealth, many of the vocational schools are at capacity and turning away students, and we know that to be true in our own area. The challenge is the cost. And so I have not seen any sort of plan put forward or real effort to figure out how would we do that. But there is also, not only the need sort of at our level, recognizing that our students want to go there to vocational schools, but there's also quite an awareness across the state that we have a skills gap. And a lot of the gap could be filled if we could actually put more students through vocational schools. And today, vocational schools are different to in the past, in that traditionally, it was you went to a vocational school, and you went immediately sort of into that vocational or an apprentice training program. Today, we're actually seeing a good number of students who come out and then go on to, whether it's a two-year or a four-year opportunity for additional schooling, higher ed. And so, and that's great, but in some ways, that has also led to some of the crunch that we're seeing there, because there are just more students who want to take advantage of the opportunities that they can find in these settings. So I, there isn't a plan there, but there is a great awareness that we need to do something.
There's some conversation.
There is some conversation, and there has been quite a bit of effort, again, a number of grants. I was at Assabette actually yesterday, and they have benefited from a number of grants, the new greenhouse that is out back, that has been built with grant money, which is enabling many of their different programs to benefit from. There has also been a number of dollars put into buying updated equipment, so that the students are actually learning on the equipment that companies are using in their shops today. So when they're, they're leaving, they're immediately employable, because they've already worked on those machines. And so there's been a number, a good amount of effort put into ensuring that these educational, vocational schools can buy equipment that is immediately usable. And I would also say that, you know, for many of us at the, at the, in the House, there's also an awareness that it's not just enough in order to provide the educational opportunity. We also have to have a state in which people can come out and start earning a decent living and yet afford to live in the Commonwealth. And that is, again, one of our challenges as well. We don't have enough affordable housing. We don't have housing for, for people who are sort of in that first, second job, you know, who have yet to sort of get to that level where they're, they're comfortable and can, and so we know that it's not just enough to educate students, because if we educate them and give them the skill set, if they can't afford to live here, even if the job is here, then they're going to go elsewhere with those skills. And so for me, those two things are part and parcel, not only making sure they have the educational opportunity, but that we can keep them here in the Commonwealth. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This is Gonzano.
So you answered actually my questions that I had. So what I wanted to do is just ask you for continued support on the circuit breaker. I know, that's the same thing you always hear from us. So we appreciate any advocacy in that level, and, and thank you for your support, especially around the work you did for Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services and helping them acquire funds. So, so that's all.
Thank you.
Colleagues? So first of all, thank you for your responsiveness, not only to the superintendent, but to each of us as individual school committee members. I know that you are always willing to engage us in conversation about all of our many and varied needs, and Shrewsbury Public Schools pretty much always finds its way to the top of your priority list. So we do recognize that and appreciate that. I have kind of a hypothetical question for you, and I wanted to ask about FBRC, Foundation Budget Review Commission, which were, you know, twenty fifteen, we're getting to the point where there's some dust collecting on that. But of course, implementing those recommendations involves a large pot of revenue. I know that there are a couple of ballot questions coming up statewide this fall, that hypothetically, one possible result is a windfall of revenues. There are obviously other possible results, but that's one possible result. What is your sense of if we do walk into a large amount of revenue all at once, I also know that a lot of hands are going to want to grab at that, what is your sense of how much of that is going to be for educational expenditures? Everybody obviously has their own priorities. There are a lot of other needs that are fairly urgent, that are pretty expensive floating around right now. What's your sense, talking to your colleagues, of how much of an investment is going to be made in K through twelve if we do walk into those revenues?
So, and that's the real challenge. So the so-called millionaire's tax, as it's called, which would increase on people who earn over a million dollars, the taxes that they are paying. Right now, it is actually at the Supreme Judicial Court. They're looking at whether or not it's constitutional. That is a question. And that has been part of my concern with it, because you can't constitutionally dedicate revenue. And so what could happen is, and what my belief would happen is, in the first maybe two years of it, we would, as a legislature and in the House, where all budget money bills must start, we would be very strict with that. We would dedicate the funds to education and transportation, which is what the ballot question calls for. The problem is, if you look back at any point in time on any revenues that have come into the state, so if you look at the tobacco bill settlement that happened years ago, and the money was supposed to come in, and was supposed to be used to help prevent more kids from smoking, the money got deviated into different things. We don't have a good track record of saying we're going to do something and then continuing to do something. Now, part of that is an ill will. Part of that is different things pop up. You have priorities all of a sudden that come out of nowhere, and you have to figure out how to fund them. And it is also, quite frankly, you don't know if you go into another time when there is a recession, if you're going to have to look at, well, how do we reallocate these funds? So I am suspect at best that over the longer term, we would actually keep those funds in those two distinct pots. The other concern, quite frankly, is even if you buy into the notion that you have to constitutionally dedicate these new revenues coming in, some people think it doesn't hold you for the existing revenue that's going into education and transportation. So it would sort of be, well, we'll take five hundred million dollars out of what we currently put into education, and we'll put in five hundred million, so it's, it's still the same number. So, you know, quite frankly, if it happens, then certainly there will be money there. If the other ballot question passes to reduce the sales tax, then we're going to lose quite a bit of that. But what I would prefer to do overall, regardless of these questions weren't on the ballot, is to actually be more stringent in the requirement that we incrementally find ways to increase the amount of funding that we're putting in, so that we can fund these things that we have identified are gaps. I think the only way that we're going to do it is if we say each year, we're going to allocate X amount more to this until we get at least to where we said we were going to be now two or three years ago. And then we have to always be looking at it. And that's part of the problem, is when you only do, and that's why many of us want to keep having this commission ongoing, because when you only look at it periodically, and then you put it on a shelf, and you say, yeah, we should really do that, but you don't have a mechanism to incorporate it into your budgeting, then it's not going to happen. But I do think, obviously, of the people who are there now, I fully think that we would be very dedicated to having those funds restricted for that. But I just don't believe over the long term that we can rely on that. And what worries me is that we would make commitments, and then municipalities and school districts would make commitments, and then all of a sudden, there'd be some reason why we weren't able to fund it at that level. And now you've made commitments that you are now trying to figure out, how do we back walk away from these? So even if the money does end up coming in, I think we need to be really careful and cautious about how we move forward with it. And even as a community, if we were to get a windfall out of it, I would urge all of us, both with my, this hat, my finance committee hat, as being just really cautious with the funds, and probably putting some aside to figure out, you know, in case it doesn't all stay there for the long term, how do we make sure that we aren't hurt by that? But it's going to be a very interesting November, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Dr. Sora.
Just want to thank Representative Kane, as well as Jessica Bellevue in your office, extremely responsive. Anytime I have an inquiry or want to make a point about some pending legislation or issue, I find Representative Kane to be knowledgeable and responsive, and just a great advocate for our students, both for their education in terms of funding, and in terms of getting us what we need at the local level, but also to their health in a whole variety of ways, as you expressed in your report. And enjoy work with you, and appreciate the continued advocacy, and anytime we can be of assistance, please let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today.
Excellent. Moving on, the next item on our agenda is a series of time-scheduled appointments. We will be receiving several presentations to be followed by a public hearing with regard to a town meeting warrant article to ban polystyrene and the potential impact of that on the school department. By way of background, citizen petitioners have requested that an article be placed on the annual town meeting warrant, which prohibits the dispensing of prepared food in disposable food service containers made from expanded polystyrene in Shrewsbury. Mr. Collins and Ms. Nichols have prepared a presentation addressing the potential impacts of the passage of this warrant article, that the passage would have on Shrewsbury Public Schools. We also have the petitioners with us here tonight, who will be making a brief presentation to the school committee as well. We're going to hear first from Ms. Nichols and Mr. Collins, and then from the petitioners. Following each presentation, I'm going to give members of the school committee the opportunity to ask questions as you prefer. And once those portions, or once that portion of the agenda has concluded, we will then open a public hearing, so that members of the community who are with us tonight may express their views to the committee. Following the conclusion of that hearing, members of the committee may have, offer comments as they wish. However, I do want to note that we do have another regularly scheduled school committee meeting before town meeting. That's going to take place next Wednesday night, May sixteenth. This topic will also appear on the agenda for that meeting as well. So if school committee members would like time to reflect on the information, presentations made tonight, they may do so. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Collins and Ms. Nichols.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for taking the time to explain the process and allowed me time to queue up this presentation for all of you. And what we're going to do is, in the most time-efficient manner that we could think of, is to cover several topics on the warrant article. First, some basic facts. We'll talk a little bit about the essence of the petition. Ms. Nichols will talk about the current use of styrofoam in our cafeterias, and we'll talk about the waste disposal, recycling efforts that are currently in place, some alternatives to styrofoam if it were to be banned, and also along with our current response plan, and then potential impact to consumers of cafeteria meals. So first, just to start, I think it's fair to say, but in self-evident, but we all care deeply about our environment. It's something that we need to be mindful of in the future. And at the same time, we are not sitting here as environmental experts. We are not that. And so we're not going to speak about environmental impact of this warrant article, because we don't have the credentials to do so. What we are going to talk about, because we are experts, is the impact if it were to pass. And so we obviously work in the public school environment, serve thousands, tens of thousands of meals to schoolchildren, both breakfast and lunch, on an annual basis, and it's within the context of a highly regulated environment. And it's not only regulated by the federal and state government in terms of, you know, our operation, but the other context is, and this is really, speaks to this next slide, is that what we do is we operate in a unique environment, serving large quantities of meals in an institutional setting. And we are not like, and should not be compared to restaurants, or higher education, or other... not be compared to, uh, restaurants, uh, or, uh, higher education, or other cafeteria-like programs, because, uh, it would just not be a fair comparison. Uh, what we operate in is an environment that has limited financial resources, uh, very limited space in our schools, and short timeframes to provide meals, uh, and, of course, uh, some of our students are here, know this, uh, very well, and if you've had children go through the school system, you know, 25-minute lunch period is, uh, you know, the purpose is to serve as nutritious meal as possible in a short period of time, and to fit that into the context of, of an overall, uh, school day. Uh, the petition itself, just a couple of highlights, is, uh, the way that it is written, of course, it would not take effect until, uh, January 1st, uh, 2020, uh, and that was intentional by the petitioners to allow some time for food establishments to, uh, respond to, plan for, and respond to, uh, in a responsible way if the ban were to pass. Um, I know this is very difficult to read here, but, uh, this definitions, uh, section, and I know you have, uh, hard copy printouts there that you can read, it basically, uh, would ban single-use disposable products, uh, that are made of the so-called expanded polystyrene. And, further down, uh, it talks about, you know, who would be impacted, which would be, um, uh, you know, all restaurants and, and places, including town facilities, which is the school cafeteria program. So it does, uh, impact, uh, the school cafeteria program, it's not just private businesses and restaurants. Uh, and then finally, um, and this is the, kind of the, the prohibition here, that I just mentioned, uh, the disposable food products, in that we're included in this, uh, as well. So we are impacted, and that's what we're here to talk about. Uh, the last thing I wanna, uh, talk about before I, uh, turn over to Mrs. Nichols, is, you know, one of our current, what has been in place for, for many, many years, and this is a picture from, uh, the website of Wheelabrader in Millbury, uh, their incineration plant, uh, they are a facility that, uh, converts, uh, waste into energy, and they provide power to, uh, thousands of homes in the town of Millbury and the surrounding area, and, uh, it was, that business, of course, is set up to reduce, uh, society's dependence on landfills. Uh, so again, that kinda makes us a little bit unique in Shrewsbury, uh, in terms of, uh, our waste hauling and waste disposal. Um, so at this point, I'll turn over to Mrs. Nichols, talk a little bit about the current use of, uh, the products.
Um, all our dishwashers, we were mothballed many, many years ago in favor of disposable products. Um, just to put a, with a little bit of perspective, we use over 425,000 trays a year. Um, the majority of our products contain styrenes. Um, obvious products look like styrofoam, but even our clear plastics, that you would assume are plastic, also have styrenes. Um, there's no recycling market for these items. Um, all our disposables are placed into the waste stream and hauled to Wheelabrader, where they're burned. No Shrewsbury trash is sent to any landfill. Um, currently, we're able to recycle clean paper, cardboard, plastic milk bottles, and metal cans in the schools.
Okay, so, uh, some alternatives if the ban were to pass, uh, first would be using substitute non-EPS styrofoam products. We actually have some samples here, we're gonna pass around, so you can take a look at those. Um, uh, you know, further down the road, uh, you know, researching the feasibility of reverting back to reusables, you know, plastic washable trays, plastic drinking cups and utensils, uh, and then finally, uh, researching the, uh, products and, uh, feasibility of diverting them to some sort of compost, uh, or landfill facility, if we were to use compostable, uh, products and not reusables.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, obviously, it, uh, each of these alternatives, uh, comes with some increased cost and impact, um, and I just wanna just pause here a little bit, uh, because, um, the, you know, one of the major, uh, pieces, uh, that we deal with, and I mentioned earlier, is space limitation. So, just an example, uh, you know, patent school, uh, if you were to look at that kitchen area right now, there is literally no space for a dishwasher. Uh, you know, as enrollments, uh, increased across the district, and we add portable classrooms and the number of children, um, and the need in our kitchen spaces for additional food storage, both cold and warm storage, uh, warmers to keep, uh, the food at the correct temperature for serving, um, there's just no space, uh, for dishwashing, uh, facilities at patent schools that currently exist. Um, and, uh, so that's just one of our, one of our obstacles, and, you know, I think the same could probably be said for Shrewsbury High School. You know, that school was designed for, uh, just over 1,450 students, um, and of course, we have now over 1,800, and, uh, what was a space that had been allocated for dishwashing has been converted for food storage. So, uh, space is, is a major obstacle, along with a number of other pieces around, kind of that reusable piece. Um, so that's, that's what I'm referencing here, is just an example of cost impact, uh, for that particular type of, uh, alternative. Uh, so our response plan, uh, would be, uh, the, the premise being here, no additional resources, um, our response plan would be to use substitute products and pass along the cost to the consumer. Um, and other alternatives, if they were feasible, uh, of course, the dishwashing example that I just gave you comes with a significant capital cost, operating costs for dishwashing equipment, maintenance, chemicals, utilities, uh, both water and electricity to maintain the proper, uh, washing and rinsing temperatures, which are mandated by health code, and then, of course, staffing. Um, and so, uh, those would be, uh, some of the other cost impacts, uh, along the way. So, our immediate no resource, no additional resources, uh, response would be, uh, the use of substitute products, and, uh, Mrs. Nichols will talk a little bit about what those costs look like.
Um, the next slide was just a comparison.
As you're doing that, as you're doing that, uh, I'm gonna actually just hand out a couple of these, so they can take a look at.
So I just did a broad sampling of some of the products, and just projected cost, and if you look at the styrofoam products, we're, you know, spending about 20,000, uh, $400 on these products a year. Um, if we switch to non-styrenes, just on these products, we'd be looking at over $44,000 a year. So just on these products alone, we'd probably be increasing our costs about 24,000. And this is just a small sampling. Um, styrofoam is good for either hot or cold food. Non-styrene, you specifically have to use a cold or a hot cup, they're not interchangeable. Um, a benefit of styrofoam, it's an insulator, it keeps cold foods cold and hot foods hot. The non-styrofoam, um, containers do not contain heat. We did a sampling at the high school with hot soup, it's very hot, be really hard to serve that soup in the schools. Um, the other issue, any of the products that you can see that look like clear plastic, um, have to be stored under 70 degrees, where styrofoam has no temperature storage. So our storage rooms in the summer are probably upwards of 90 to 95 degrees. So that's a concern, how we would handle those products.
And then finally, um, just kind of in closing here, uh, if, if the, uh, ban were to pass at, at town meeting, uh, and again, the no, no additional resource option, um, would be to pass along the cost to the consumer, and, you know, likely in, in the range of 10 cents to 20 cents per meal, uh, it's really, you know, too early to tell exactly what kinda recommendation we would make, it's, you know, about two years away. Um, you know, the marketplace conditions could be different, better or worse, you know, we don't know if the demand increases, maybe price increases, uh, if there's a flood in the market of substitute products, then maybe prices come down, you know, we can't forecast that, but given the current pricing, uh, today, um, you know, we'd probably see that somewhere in the range of 10 to 20 cents per meal. And then you have the current meal prices there, just as a reference. Um, and certainly, you know, finally, uh, since the, if the ban were to pass, doesn't take effect till January 2020, there is a provision for an additional six-month extension as well, um, that, you know, we certainly have time to further study, uh, the other options, um, and I think my recommendation, um, if the ban were to pass, uh, would be to ask for some additional resources, uh, whether it be within the school department budget, or whether it's part of a town-wide green initiative, for some outside, independent assistance to evaluate the various options, because they too come with their own environmental impact. And again, as we said at the outset, you know, we're not environmental experts. Um, so, uh, I would like to, uh, get some assistance to guide us along the way. Certainly, we know our operation, um, you know, and this is one of those issues that also crosses, uh, multiple departments, so, you know, the waste hauling and recycling efforts are not something that we manage in the school department.
Mm-hmm.
Those are managed by the public buildings department, uh, with contracts that, uh, he secures, uh, under, uh, the auspices of his department. So this is something that crosses multiple departments, and, uh, you know, again, if we were to, uh, look at other alternatives, uh, I would ask for additional resources, consulting, uh, to help guide, uh, through that process. Uh, so, uh, that's the information that we have, you know, I said at the outset, this is not a, you know, pro or a con kind of thing, we're just talking about impact, uh, in terms of, uh, if, if the ban were to pass, and, uh, we're both, uh, happy to try to respond, any questions you have, or anything about the products that were, were passed around.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions? Mrs. Fritz?
I think it's important to note, when we talk about the summary impact, what Mr. Collins stated, you might look at that and think, well, that's not a big cost to pass on to consumers, but that's just in the schools, person that we know of. Um, and like you said, there's, there's across-the-town cost impact, so I agree with you, if, if the ban passes and it is something we have to deal with going forward, it is a issue to discuss bigger than just the school committee.
Mr. Wensky?
Yeah, no, a great presentation, um, appreciate the transparency on the impact, uh, that this, uh, might have, so ultimately, the will of the town will make the decision. Um, I, you know, I think, interesting to note too, and I know we talk about it in your annual presentation, that food services funds itself, right, through the fees that are collected, uh, through the food services provided to the students. Um, so right now, there is no impact to the appropriated budget, or the budget that we discuss every year. Um, and really, to compare school cafeterias with restaurants, I, I agree with you, I mean, it's, it's hard to do that, you know, uh, where you're servicing, you know, 6200 students across all grade levels in 25 minutes, if that's a challenge. Um, so I think, you know, obviously, there's risk, right, and I think it's important to present, uh, the risk to the town, uh, in, in understanding what this will impact in terms of passing along any potential increase in operational costs. So, uh, thank you very much.
Mr. McGee?
So, were either of you in the district, when they made the move from washing things and, you know, they're using the...
I was at Floral. Um, it was the only dishwasher in place when I started about 20 years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it was so labor-intensive, and we were floundering financially then, we decided to eliminate the dishwasher then, and it was also old, and it needed constant repairs, and it finally got to, we couldn't repair it anymore, so at that point, because of the labor, the cost of replacing it, we did away with the dishwasher.
You know what other districts are doing, how they're handling it, at all?
A combination.
Where, where there is a styrene?
A combination, um, some are going back to dishwashers, some had dishwashers in place, I think there's a move to compost, I mean, that would be probably the ideal goal.
Hmm, okay. Thank you.
I would just add to that, too, that I, I think, you know, from thinking back and reading back, just in a very cursory way, it, it was about 20 years ago, where these products that you see, like that black, uh, styrofoam tray, um, were marketed to school departments who were struggling financially for the reasons, uh, stated, and, um, you know, seen as a very cost-effective way to, uh, assist, uh, school cafeteria operations. Of course, these are, these are, and I use the term, they're nickel operations, they're, the margins are so thin that, you know, when you have to, um, have a $2,000 repair on your dishwasher, that hurts financially. So I think you saw the shift about 20 years ago, in, in many, many school districts, um, away from dishwashing into, uh, the disposable products. And, you know, not only are, uh, the, you know, the staffing pieces around dishwashing, you know, can be costly, but those positions are also sometimes very difficult to fill.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, they're, you know, usually low-paying jobs, uh, at, uh, hours that aren't great, um, and, uh, so that's just another aspect of, uh, I think what, the dynamic that we saw from 20 years ago to now.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Mrs. Gonzales?
Yeah, this is, um, a lot more complex than I thought when it first showed up in our book, so thank you, and I look forward to hearing, um, uh, the, the next, um, group. Uh, but one of my, um, it's gonna be off the top of your head, really, I was concerned about how the, the plastic or, or these alternative products might have to be in climate-controlled, um, because they have to be under 70 degrees. I, what, like, what would we do? Like, how would we manage that in, in buildings that tend not to be air-conditioned, um, the majority of them are not?
We couldn't serve some of the products we serve, it'd have the most impact at the high school.
Okay.
Where we do, you know, a lot of the grab-and-goes, the, um, salad bowls, um, we'd have to look at alternatives, but it's, you know, they're great because they have a cover, they're, you know, they're appealing to a student, um, I don't know if we can replace all of those at this point.
Okay, because of the, um, the, the sensitivity, the temperature sensitivity.
Further questions? Colleagues? Okay, thank you for your presentation. I understand we're also gonna receive a presentation now from the petitioners, if you would like to come forward, uh, and pull up additional chairs to the table as necessary. Unless, McCollum will help with that. Welcome, and if you wanna just go down the line and introduce yourselves to the committee?
Yeah.
Oh, um...
My name is Ramesh Razaan, I'm the lead petitioner on this, uh, on this article.
I'm Ral Razaan.
I'm Anur Dyer.
I'm Anish Wardi.
And I'm Sedon Dossi, and, uh, we're all juniors at Shrewsbury High School.
Excellent, thank you.
So first, first of all, thanks for giving us the opportunity to present. Uh, I come to Shrewsbury 10 years ago, and I, I think earlier presentation took me down the memory lane, because my daughter was in the 2015, 10 scholars, and I think it's not about the cost, it is about the health and the welfare where, where industry is going, and what is, uh, what is going on across the globe. I, if you are thinking about short-term decisions versus the long-term impact and where industry is going, I think we all have to be responsible for it. My son is a junior, and he'll be out of the school system pretty soon, so it's not about me, it's about the community that we all live in, that, the community that we all care about a lot. Sorry, we took on this journey roughly, uh, six months ago, when these kids actually presented the compelling story about the catastrophic impacts that this styrofoam has on the impact, and more importantly, on the health and the beauty of this, uh, this society. Just to let you know, from the time we started, this is our third presentation. In last one month, when we have presented to town, two towns in the state have already passed a ban on the styrofoam. While we can understand that there are other ramifications, it's not, it doesn't come without the cost, but the cost to health, I don't know whether it's negotiable. And it is not only, uh, what I call is, when you talk about Massachusetts, we just talked about Massachusetts number one, uh, in the, uh, education, do we want Massachusetts to be, continue to be the number one? California, New York, uh, most other states have actually banned it statewide, which these kids can go, uh, talk with, talk to you about. Now, but I just wanna applaud these, uh, juniors, because they're very busy, as you can see, they're like almost, feel falling, falling asleep, uh, but they have, they have taken some pains to not only do something for themselves, but for the society. So we should give them, these young men, a plaud for doing this, and they will walk you through the story, and let's take questions after that, and talk about the health and fam, uh, health impacts of this thing.
So, my name is Ral Razaan, and we, as students of the Shrewsbury High School community, and urge Shrewsbury to move on from the use of styrofoam, because of its catastrophic effect on both our health and the environment, and over the next few slides, we'll go, we dig deeper into all of these.
Okay, so here's a picture of some styrofoam in our Shrewsbury schools, some of it is served, is where we serve the food, and the rest of it ends up in the trash. So we're seeing a lot of these black styrofoam trays, as well as other products using styrofoam across our school. Uh, and it's not just... And it's not just within the school, but it's also outside of it. As there's a lot of littering going on outside as people bring in their Boston Donuts, coffee and all that stuff and throw it out sometimes on the street or in the grass. And we also took pictures, all these pictures, both the ones in S H S and the ones here in Dean Park, were all taken on one day. We saw so much styrofoam littered at many different locations in both places.
And so the question is, where does this really end up, all this styrofoam waste? And so what, ninety, eighty percent of it ends up in these landfills? And the problem is, is that styrofoam is not biodegradable, which means it's gonna stay here for thousands and thousands of years. Even after we die, we're gonna see this littering our world completely. And then the twenty percent that doesn't make it to the landfills is almost as bad, or just as bad because it makes it into our waterways, like our seas and oceans, which leaves for birds and fish to eat it up, which is really bad because the styrofoam has these toxins that will poison these animals, kill them and end up harming our biodiversity overall. And so this is just a national estimate. And so about twenty-five billion dollar, billion styrofoam cups are thrown out every single year. And just over this presentation, about ten minutes, about fifty thousand styrofoam cups will be thrown out. And to put that into context, I believe we had the number of four hundred twenty-five thousand styrofoam cups just used in our public school system over one year, which is like a lot of waste that we have to deal with.
And now let's talk about the proposal or the current solution that we have to our styrofoam issues, and that is incineration. And there are several major problems with this incineration. The first is when we incinerate the styrofoam, it's releasing these like dioxins into the atmosphere. And these dioxins are actually carcinogenic, which means that they lead to cancer in ourselves, our children. We need to be stopping this. And also, styrofoam contains the known carcinogen styrene, which was on a list of the EPA of like forty known carcinogens, styrene was on that list. And that is also a problem because when we like incinerate the styrene, it is also going into the atmosphere and it's going into our food chain. So like when we eat things in the environment, like we're taking in this styrene. And also like when styrofoam cups are heated, for example, the styrene like goes into our foods, which is also like leading to cancer in our society. And then another major problem with styrofoam is that like a lot of non-renewable resources go into making it. And like, as you all know, I'm sure, these non-renewable resources are often what has been known to like cause climate change. So we need to be limiting this at all costs. And additionally, with styrofoam, there's been a national report of seven billion dollars of hidden costs when it comes to like creating the styrofoam, which adds about one point two cents per cup. That's all like just hidden costs.
So animals on land such as ourselves are also affected in terms of, so animals as well as sea animals are affected. And we can see through suffocation, choking, intestinal blockages and entanglement, these sea animals are suffering. On top of that, two million birds on land and sea annually are affected. So we cannot just be thinking of ourselves, we need to be thinking about the biodiversity of our land and of our earth as a whole. So now, over the next few slides, we will be showing our solution.
So here's a map of the United States showing how styrofoam is altered, these styrofoam bans have already spread across the country. The light blue is where there are cities or multiple cities that have already banned styrofoam. The dark blue are states that have major cities that are in the proposals or in the works of banning styrofoam. And you see Massachusetts is on there, we have at this point thirty towns, thirty towns that have banned styrofoam already. So let's become the thirty-first. So, and more importantly, this is potentially the first step towards continuing in support of a statewide polystyrene law. So with the plastic bag ban that we passed recently, that one has currently seventy-something towns that have banned them individually. And that's why the movement for a statewide plastic bag ban is growing. Similarly, when we can hop on the bandwagon with styrofoam and join these thirty other towns and help other towns, which are all, many other towns that are currently proposing styrofoam bans just like we are. If we all can ban together, we can have it as a statewide law and enact more change. And so this is the list of the towns. Specifically, three of them were added just recently before, in between, three of them, in between our last presentation and this one, Provincetown, Andover and Orleans. Orleans was passed just today. So many of these towns, if Lee can do it, we can do it.
And so we heard from the last presentation, a lot of concerns about how like the dishwashers would be used in schools. But what we're mainly proposing is these compostable, reusable types of alternatives that could be used in schools. And that's the way that many other towns are going right, going right now. So, for example, you can have the compostable recyclable trays or even the biodegradable ones that can go just in our regular recycling bins. And so we believe that the result of this ban would be a low economic cost overall for Shrewsbury. And in turn, we'd have a cleaner town with less pollution and a healthier people because we have the decreased likelihood of styrene getting into our food.
But now let's look at like what some other places around the country have done when it comes to styrofoam. So for example, in September twenty fifteen, New York City and the five other largest urban school districts in the U.S. actually banned styrofoam like across their cities. And as we show you here, that's eliminated half a billion styrene foam trays overall per year from landfills. So like if all these really big cities can do it, you can look at these pictures where you see like their trash cans filled with styrofoam and versus like compostable trays that wouldn't harm the environment nearly as much. So if all these like really big cities can be able to do this, then why can't we?
So in addition to all the towns that have already banned, several major corporations have also banned polystyrene. For example, Chipotle and McDonald's and Panera have already moved away from polystyrene to alternatives. And Dunkin' Donuts by twenty twenty is already proposing to completely get rid of polystyrene. And if Dunkin' Donuts, whose logo consists of a polystyrene cup, can move away from polystyrene, then why can't we? And also, the common misconception is that polyst, that alternatives are much greater in cost, but it's really not. When, when looking at this source, we can see that the average cost difference from alternatives to polystyrene itself is really only one cent when considering to count all of these different factors.
So what is the bylaw that we proposed? The previous presentation touched on it, let's focus more specifically. So sections two and three, as they explain, focuses on styrofoam that's used for hot food, so in our schools and restaurants. But it omits like grocery stores. So it allows for, if you go and pick up cold fish or meat in those, because when you have hot food, it's more likely to transmit through the, like the styrene is more likely to be transmitted. Whereas with cold food, that isn't much of a concern. So that's a major omission. And the other part that wasn't brought up was section four, which allows for an exemption for, or a deferral for businesses that show that they can't financially compete if they have to remove their styrofoam. While we did contact a lot of businesses and very few had problems, if one of them does have a problem, each year they can come and show that fact and they can get a deferment. For majority of businesses, though, they should be able to switch. So the bylaw specifically recommends banning plates, cups, bowls, trays, hinged and lidded containers, but not uncooked food.
And so what we did was, over the past few weeks, we've went out and contacted the businesses in Shrewsbury to act, ask how they would react to a ban. And so about seventy percent said that they would be in full support of a switch to styrofoam because majority of them don't use styrofoam. And then twenty percent said that they are willing to go along with the changes as the town makes. And some concern has been with the businesses mainly is that how will it affect the competitiveness? And so while we do have the deferments, we also contacted chains from other towns that have banned styrofoam and they've all been able to switch to a healthier paper alternative. For example, KFC, which uses a lot of styrofoam right now, said in Natick was able to change to their paper alternatives to make sure that they can be more environmentally friendly. And so we also looked into the impacts to our schools. So on the public schools level, we think that the cost difference will be a little bit more than it would be for the private schools. But we do have ways to address these concerns. So we first believe that like the big hidden costs like Sedon talked about for getting rid of the styrofoam and making that styrofoam is something that's, we're not considering and we're, when we're looking at the main budget itself. But more importantly, we think that there's possibilities for grants. For example, the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Department is ready to hand out a, or is open to looking into handing out a grant for schools that do use reusable containers and trays. And we also have like the ability of like increasing the demand for all these materials and buying them in bulk, which New York City proved to decrease costs overall for these trays. And so when we contacted the private schools in Shrewsbury, like St. John's and Al Hamra, St. John's said that they didn't use a lot of styrofoam. They only used it to, I believe, give out like their pastas on certain days. And Al Hamra is completely styrofoam-free and they use biodegradable plates.
So in conclusion, I think we all need to be weighing on a cost benefit analysis. So while, while there might be like a few, a small increase in price, you can't really put a price on our health and that's the most important thing. And basically, they may have brought up issues regarding like the feasibility, but if like thirty other towns in Massachusetts have seen no problem at all switching and like we shouldn't see an issue either. And we must be weighing, like saving our own lives over a small increasing cost.
So this is just going into our bylaw and we have over eighteen months for Shrewsbury to adapt to this ban if it were to pass.
At this time, we'll take your questions.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions? Mrs. Fritz?
Thank you, I give you a lot of credit, juniors in high school. It's an excellent presentation and I know you've spent a lot of time. I've watched a couple of your presentations and they're all excellent, so thank you for doing that. And I just want to make it clear, I'm speaking for myself and not for my committee members. We're not dismissing the health pieces of this presentation or anything that you said. But when we look at it, I'm looking, we have to look at the big picture and the costs that are associated with change. The comment that town, that town could absorb the costs. We also have to look at, you know, budget issues that we're already having with schools and municipal. So we have to really look at the big picture and how can we do this if it passes in the best manner possible? So we're not ignoring either side of it, but we really gotta look at it in the big picture. And I did have one question, and it was when you talk about the other towns that have banned, do you have any percentage on ones that compost versus burn?
No.
Have you gotten along to the weeds yet, you know? What are, what are other towns doing with the...
So the majority of the people we talked to, for example, like Natick, they are moving to like the paper and compostable items. But while we don't, we're still working on like a general consensus of how like those thirty towns are approaching it. We do know specific examples. But addressing your concern about like how, how we're gonna manage those budgets, we do believe that the twenty twenty date is really important for giving ourselves like those eighteen months to prepare for any switch in like the costs and how we're gonna move monies around. And what we really want to emphasize is that like, while there might, maybe a large startup cost, in the long term, we believe, like we've seen other cities do, like New York City, have those costs go down as we increase the demand and buy more in bulk of these alternatives.
I think two points to make. One is the demand is continuing to increase and the prices have continued to drop. You can see that by twenty twenty, the prices are going to be equal or probably not negotiable. The other part to, the other part to think about is, there has been research published recently that if you actually go to recycle it completely, which is the, which could be the ultimate solution, the cost actually is better. Now, there is a startup cost, a capital cost to set up the machines and do stuff. But if you look at some research, again, this is independent research, it is lower cost to run that. Now, I know we talked about storing the, storing the products, but you have to look at the reverse also. Storing the styrofoam takes a lot of space because there's, storing the paper products, probably is not going to take them that much space. So I, I think there is always arguments on both sides.
Exactly.
And on, on top of that, we aren't suggesting, we are just, we are proposing a solution. We would leave it up to the town to decide on what's the best possible pathway.
And just finally to, one thing that, I think it was Framingham we saw, the, when, when they talked about the high startup costs for reusables for like dishwashers and everything, they got a grant of thirty-five, thirty-nine thousand dollars to help them start up these costs to deal with implementing having dishwashers. And the other state, another city, I don't remember exactly which one, Amherst, I believe. One of them got a sizable amount too, of above ten thousand to move towards composting because the state recognized that if you have composting and you have access to that, that would, that they favored that and they were able to give money to them too. So we could definitely apply for that regardless of which solution we go for.
Thank you.
Further questions? Mrs. Gonzano?
It's not a question really, it's a comment. I thank you for coming, you've given me a lot of food for thought. And like I said before, it's really a complex issue. And as a committee, we have to, we have to juggle and balance a lot of different priorities and needs. But I very much appreciate your passion and enthusiasm and research. And I'm really proud of you and the kind of students that you are to be here tonight. And, you know, I'll be thinking about this for a good long time, so, so, so thank you.
My only question is, do we have a copy of your presentation?
Yes.
Excellent. Any further questions?
I agree with Aaron, this was an excellent presentation, I thank you for bringing it before us. I still, I also have a lot of research and thinking to do. Not really prepared to make a decision right now, but I will say I'm very impressed with what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming before the committee, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. St...
Very brief, I know we're over. I'll be brief. A lot of the work we've been doing the last several years has been talking about how do we create more real-world learning opportunities for students. This is real-world learning, I mean, this is, this is not a simulation. You are affecting the political process here in our town of Shrewsbury based on skills that you've gained in our schools and that makes me very proud as your superintendent. As Mr. Collins indicated earlier, it's not our position to take a position on this one way or the other. That the wisdom of town meeting will prevail in terms of the vote that will be coming up later this month. But we believe certainly that it will be important for town meeting members to be informed as to what the impact will be in terms of the school department. But again, it was an excellent presentation, look forward to hearing any public comments. And then again, as Mr. Pelich indicated, the school committee will discuss the issue a week from tonight and indicate how they want to address, making sure the information around how the school department could be affected if it were to pass. But again, you're to be commended and really appreciate the time.
No, no, I think the one thing that to comment upon, that Shrewsbury is a fantastic town. That's why it's growing and in terms of people moving to that. I think the question is how, do we want to continue to be inviting that kind of environment and inviting more people to move to Shrewsbury?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we are gonna move to a public hearing on this topic. I would invite members of the community who are present, who are interested in making remarks to the school committee on this subject to come forward and we'll probably have you, I'll have you raise your hands and I'll recognize you. Before we start, I just want to remind all members of the public, when you come up to the microphone, to introduce yourselves, to be brief, to be germane to the agenda item and also to be respectful of everyone. At no point will we tolerate comments that attack any individual or person. So sir, would you like to come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, please?
Sure, Bob Ryan, Colonial Drive, precinct seven. I have a high school senior, a high school freshman. I just want to make a disclaimer, I'm on the Shrewsbury High School Council. We discussed this some last night, my statements are my own statements, not anything coming out of the council. I think we, and people probably remember me last year, I'm the guy that the citizens petitioned to ban the plastic bag ban. So you can figure out where I'm coming from. Mr. Collins and Ms. Nichols did a great presentation, so I'm not gonna repeat pretty much what they said. You know, we hear there's eighty percent of the stuff goes to a landfill. Well, in Shrewsbury, as already discussed, and I think this is very relevant, for, for the school committee to consider, for the town to commit, everything gets incinerated and it's not getting out dioxins. There are scrubbers, there are filters, it's a very clean process at Wheel Abraider, they're monitored. What we see is coming steam, they generate electricity. So for us to talk about compostable, talking about landfills, talking about oceans, it's irrelevant to Shrewsbury. There's three hundred twenty towns then that have not banned it, there's three hundred fifty-one in the community. We're short on school staff, there's enough money already being charged to parents. To increase more costs, I think is not appropriate. My own personal view, government should not be getting involved in the daily operations of businesses and schools. I think the school committee can run the school system itself. And I think if you look at, depending on what Mr. Collins showed, you could actually have more trash and we already have a shortage of custodians. One thing that not these, and I do want to applaud the students. Representative Kane talked about civil engagement, I think it's great, the students have gotten involved. I wish we had more civil engagement in this town. You know, so I do applaud the students, I'm not saying anything negative on them. I was told, and I can't say this is true, that to get a dishwasher for the high school is over a hundred ten thousand dollars. We've already heard there's no space for one. We've already heard there's no space for one. So we're we're probably talking, if you take every school sys- every school in town. You know, you're probably talking over a million dollars by the time you get there to just uh startup costs. Um in addition to having to ru- uh sub- have staff. So what I would urge the school committee is to take a position, although I just heard Dr. Sawyer say that you're not taking a vote on this. Um to basically indicate that it's not a good solution for the town of Shrewsbury, specifically for the school systems. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And just to clarify, this uh topic will appear on the committee's agenda at next Wednesday's item. And at which point, the committee will discuss what it is we intend to do, or if anything on this matter. So, Ms. Rajwani.
We just have a couple of uh fourth graders with M-Pass tomorrow.
Great. So wanna wanna go come right up the microphone and just introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Lucy Rajwani. I live in precinct seven and I am here to present why you should say no to styrofoam. Did you know hundreds of styrofoam trays are used by Shrewsbury Public Schools like this each day all by themselves? That's a lot of waste, not to mention the damage to the environment. From the very start, styrofoam has been harmful. Styrofoam is based on crude oil. When styrofoam is manufactured, it creates air pollution because fifty seven chemical byproducts are released. Not only that, people are getting hurt making styrofoam. When you burn styrofoam, toxic gases form. Styrofoam puts a huge amount of waste in our landfill because it takes a lot of ti- time for it to decompose, at least five hundred years. School is a place that teaches kids good habits, good mental habits, good physical habits, good habits for them and the people around them. Styrofoam is a very bad ha- habit for the environment. There are other healthy for the environment materials to make our schools lunch trays out of, such as corn waste, recycled cardboard, or recycled newsprint. In short, say no to styrofoam and you have to go cleaner town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have a couple more?
My name is Declan Daly and I'm a fourth grader at Spring Street Elementary.
And I'm Noel Daly and I'm a sixth grader at Sherwood Middle School.
Like many of our friends, we both buy lunch from the school cafeteria a couple times a week. As we all know, our schools have come to use polystyrene, also known as styrofoam, for our lunch trays when they serve us food. Over time, researchers have figured out that each time we place a hot food, such as pizza, chicken patties, and hot dogs. On a styrofoam tray and then injects the food, it releases chemicals and toxins into our body. That eventually can cause cancer. This is not a healthy choice for all the kids who buy lunch at our public schools.
Did you know America uses and throws away twenty five billion styrofoam trays each year? That's enough styrofoam to wrap around the earth four hundred thirty six times. Styrofoam is not biodegradable and it appears to last forever. A lot of the styrofoam from landfills end up on the coastline. The polystyrene is carried from the landfills to the streets through storm drains and is then drained out into the ocean to marine wildlife. Eighty percent of marine debris originates from land-based sources. This affects animals in the wild due to broken down bits of polystyrene. Obstructing their airways, contaminating their resources, and causing cancer and digestive problems. In the end, styrofoam isn't just harming people, it's also harming wildlife.
Please consider using an alternative other than styrofoam. There are plenty of healthy recyclable options. That would help save our environment. We ask that you say no to styrofoam and keep our earth clean and green.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other members of the audience tonight who would like to offer comments to the committee? Mr. Moss.
That's a tough act to follow, but I will try. The toughest one. Brian Moss, sixteen Ruth and Circle. Uh she has a a couple of questions. Um. Before before the petition was presented, um you know, through the the town meeting process. Um were there any plans by the school district to move away from styrofoam?
So this is a public hearing. This is not a Q and A. We're here to take your comments on the matter. Uh if if staff would like to answer the question, they may, but I'm not gonna put them on the spot.
Yeah, no, we we haven't had any plans previously to uh move away from styrofoam.
Um what 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 are the um current plans for the uh new Beal School? Um uh that we're building as far as whether we're gonna have reusables or styrofoam or what? Just just try to figure that out.
I would just say that by the time that school is built, uh town meeting will like you heard, the state may have taken action. Uh right now, the current plan is not to include a dishwasher, if that's the question.
Okay, thank you. Um just another thing is I know the um petitioners uh that mentioned in one of their other presentations. That they had um you know, gotten this bylaw from the town of Amherst. And um in looking at the um town of Amherst Public School District, they are currently able to serve. On the the compostable alternatives in their school district, because they are um you know, affected by the ban in the town of Amherst. So that would be an example that that people could look at. It's a little smaller than Shrewsbury, but it's an example. So I looked around for bigger examples and I um contacted the pub- Boston Public Schools and they don't use styrofoam trays. They use compost compostable trays. And of course, uh New York, the the New York Public Schools was the ones that started the whole thing. Um where they got New York City to ban styrofoam, but they also moved away the entire New York Public Schools away from styrofoam. Um so I hope that you um you know, consider that and uh and and alternatives as a viable option. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments for the committee? Sir?
Uh hi, good evening. Uh my name is John. I live over on uh Walnut Street. Um and so this is, I think, most of these guys recognize me from the finance committee. Um so this is only my second time actually coming and sort of being engaged in our town politics after uh sort of being here for a while. Um and I had to take notes to make sure I kept myself on track a little bit, so I hope you don't mind. Um. So I think like one of the things that I noticed in one of the presentations was this concept of consumers. And that I think is the most important word that I've heard tonight. Is that it's not only that the students are consumers themselves in terms of that they are the customers that are being served, but they are the ones consuming these products. I find it coincidentally, I don't know if anyone saw this today, that in the Journal of Pediatrics came out today. That eighty eight percent of those affected by climate change are going to be those under the age of twelve. So when we think about using these kinds of resources, when we feed our consumers. We need to think about, are we prepared to have an impact on nine out of every ten kids we encounter in our schools? And so with that in mind, you know, we need to sort of think about, you know, how this is a complex and real world problems. Those are also words that I heard tonight and sort of this other word of irrelevancy. When I think about my five-year-old son and how he's entering the school system next next year. There's nothing irrelevant about him engaging in our school system. And there's nothing irrelevant about him. Using a product that is toxic when it's made, when they eat off it, and then also when it's disposed of. So there's nothing irrelevant about that. And that's very real world for me. There's nothing complex when I come to this microphone. And I talk about what my son is going to be confronting as he faces the real world. One thing I also want you all to think about is that we have like Earth Day. We have compost facilities at our schools. What is the inherent contradiction and hypocrisy if we're celebrating these things? And then serving our kids chicken nuggets on something that can't be broken down by Mother Earth? And I'm not like an eco warrior. I wasn't sent here by, you know, the Sierra Club. I'm just like an average bearded, you know, dad of a five-year-old. Who was upset tonight because I couldn't read him, you know, his Ninjago Lego book. And so I'm just imploring you to sort of give some serious thought to that this cost benefit analysis. And I've worked, I was a teacher at one point. I work in the public sector now. I work with students every single day. And so when I think about the cost of the health and education of my son. That's, I would gladly, if I had it, write that check for forty five thousand dollars every year. To make up the cost difference between styrofoam and a recyclable or renewable product. But unfortunately, I work for the state, so. I can't afford razors, that's why I look like this. Um so I just implore you to sort of think about that. This is complex. This is real world. But there's nothing irrelevant about it. And so um as you move into the meeting next week, I want you to sort of think about my son. Think about nine out of every ten ten kids that walk through the door and how this impacts them and how this is going to impact. All of the children around the globe moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Further comments? So folks, during a public hearing, we don't allow either applause or booing. I did overlook that when the kids spoke. Because they're kids and I would applaud for them myself. But going forward, there's neither applause nor booing in a public hearing. Uh would anyone else like to make comments to the committee tonight? Sir, come on up to the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Monish and I'm father of Sedan, so I'm a little biased. But uh I don't know about you. For me, when I first have heard about what they were doing, it was a learning for me. I did not know styrofoam causes this. I work for a big company and I've been drinking on those styrofoam cups for a while now. I had cups sitting on my from vendors and others, which I was not using. After seeing the presentation for the first time. I personally have moved away from styrofoam. I do not drink coffee in those styrofoam cups anymore. I take my own cup and clean it at the end of the day. But given that this is a school committee. And one of the responsibility of schools is to educate our kids. I didn't know, I don't know if everyone of you knew what styrofoam does. At the very least, I think we should be telling the kids, if we continue to for uh serve in these styrofoam cups or trays. Are we causing them harm? I was just reading Googling while I was sitting there. I saw that at least out of those twenty seven, in three towns. The Board of Health has banned these and not the town as such. So there has to be some harm, I would say. Whether it's proven, not proven. But if in three towns, the Board of Health has banned it, there has to be some negatives. So even if the town does not pass this ban, I would recommend that the school at least give the alternative to the kids. Maybe stop both. Tell the kids, this is compostable, this is styrofoam. And if you eat styrofoam, this is what could happen. Let them make the choice. So. And again, I applaud these kids. I'm actually uh passing a resolution in my own office. To have this banned. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Further comments from the audience tonight? Going once, going twice. Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing tonight. I will remind folks who are watching either at home now. Or who happen to watch this at a future broadcast that uh be prior to our meeting on May the sixteenth, which is next Wednesday night. We certainly invite members of the public to offer feedback to the committee. Uh best way to do that is via email to the school committee email address. So again, we do encourage further feedback. Uh do any members of the committee have comments that they want to offer? Any further tonight? Dr. Sawyer, anything before we move on?
Uh but just thank people for their for their comments. I do just want to, um it's more a point of inquiry. I know the gentleman who spoke mentioned someone making a comment about something being irrelevant. And I'm not quite sure I heard anyone say that. Uh if anything, obviously, this is relevant uh to our community and and it's a uh debate that will be had at town meeting. Which is remains, I think, the purest form of government that we have in the country. And we'll see what they determine relative to uh what happens. Um but I hope if if someone was misheard, uh that that certainly wouldn't, isn't my perspective that it's irrelevant. Uh and again, I commend the students for for doing work beyond what is a plenty of work to assign them their junior year of high school. Uh to take on this uh project and and follow their passion relative to what uh they want to see the town do. Um I look forward to the uh conversation with the uh committee next week.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. We're gonna move on to the next item on our agenda. We have nothing under curriculum. So next we move to policy. Uh tonight, we had a second reading for the Regulation of Conductive Teachers Policy. Uh I understand we have received some feedback, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Consano, who along with myself constitutes the Policy Subcommittee for an update.
That's right. So um we did not receive any public feedback, um but we have received um member feedback. And so I think at this time, if if the committee feels comfortable, I would like to to give this uh um. A little more time to to pursue the feedback that they gave us. Um and perhaps um move to table it until um a another uh meeting. If not the next one, maybe sometime in June. Um so I I was curious if that would be um agreeable to my colleagues.
Acceptable to me if you need a motion to table and.
I think we can table without objection.
Okay, table without objection.
I'm asking that as a question, not making that as a statement.
People with tabling without objection.
Excellent. Any further discussion? So without objection, we'll table that item to a future meeting.
Thank you.
Anything on your end? Nope. Uh next item on our agenda, we have nothing under Finance and Operations, old business or new business. We do have minutes before us. Uh the minutes of our meeting uh from April twenty fifth, two thousand eighteen are enclosed. And have been reviewed by Mrs. Fritz. Uh are there any corrections, additions, deletions, or other changes, objections, or discussion? Seeing none without objection, the minutes are accepted. We do need to go into executive session this evening for a multitude of purposes. I will entertain a motion that the school committee enter into executive session for the purpose of reviewing and approving executive session minutes. And for the purpose of negotiations with the Shrewsbury Paraprofessionals Association, non-represented administrators, and the superintendent of schools. Where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And reconvene to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. Motion has been made and seconded. This motion requiring a roll call vote. Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Consano?
Aye.
Mr. Pelich?
Aye.
Thank you.